Good evening. Welcome to our February 15, 2022 City Council meeting. It is 7:03 and we are now in session. Mayor Castellanos is sick today, so I will be conducting the meeting this evening. Tonight's invocation will be held by Pastor Okubo from Emmanuel First Lutheran Church, and Councilwoman Lopez Viado will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll rise.
Thank you, Mary, Mayor Protam. Raise and peace to you from God, our Father and His Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. Let us pray. Father in heaven, as you are the authority above all authorities, I ask your wisdom to be upon our city council, that they may carry out your will in guiding our city. We receive them as a gift from you. Bless their willingness to serve our city. Send your Holy Spirit among us, that we might work together in harmony for the good of the people of West Covina. Thank you for all who give of their time and talents to serve our city. We ask and thank you for all of this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
(Inaudible)
Please be seated. Thank you, Pastor. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Tabatabai.
Present.
Councilman Wu.
Here.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado.
Present.
Mayor Protam Diaz.
Here.
Mayor Castellanos is out.
City Attorney, is there anything we need to report out of our closed session?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. There are a lot of residents in West Covina that are very interested in finding out about our Spring Festival. So what I would like to do now is invite our Assistant City Manager, Roseanne Lerma, to the front and give us a presentation of the upcoming festival.
Thank you, Mayor Protam Diaz. If you'd allow me just a moment, please. I'd like to share a video first. The city of West Covina would like to give a special thanks to the following community groups: the Seesaw Communities, the East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center, the West Covina CAA, the West Covina Business Association, and the Filipino-American Association. The support and collaboration between the city of West Covina and our local community groups and nonprofits allowed us to put together the First Annual Spring Festival. This event is not one that you will want to miss. Mark your calendars and join us for the live entertainment, food, drinks, family fun, and much more at the city of West Covina Sportsplex, March 12th and 13th at 12:00 p.m. If I may, I do want to say thank you, Mayor Protam, for allowing the Community Services Division the opportunity to give you and the rest of the city council members. Just a very brief update regarding this upcoming special event that is open to the community. So the upcoming Spring Festival is scheduled for Saturday, March 12th, and Sunday, March 13th. The purpose of the Spring Festival is to bring various community and cultural groups together in order to really create a festive environment that the community can truly enjoy and participate in. Couple of the goals that the Spring Festival has is to allow some of our smaller businesses, our restaurants, as well as those businesses trying to get started, the opportunity to sell, giving them the platform, the venue, again, as well as the opportunity to reach a number of our residents and the community by selling their products. The other goal that we are achieving by hosting the First Annual West Covina Spring Festival is also giving our nonprofit organizations, some of our partnering organizations, the opportunity to fundraise. So really, it's not only a fun and active and community-driven environment for our residents and the community beyond to enjoy, it also achieves those other two goals of allowing small businesses as well as our nonprofit groups the opportunity to thrive. So I am available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lerma. Any questions?
A quick question regarding, so we are going to have this big festival with so many group, nonprofit groups to work together. So regarding the place, I think the parking is one issue, okay? And how we to anticipate if we have a lot of attendee to attend this festival, so we want to make sure the parking, maybe we can create the buses for maybe people to take the bus from the park to over there. Like 2018, we have July 4th, Independence Day Firework, we have about 8,000 people in that place, but in the same time, okay? So have you, can you share with us how you manage it with the parking, traffic control, et cetera?
Absolutely. I think here in the city of West Covina, one of the things that the Community Services as well as the Public Services Department as a whole tries to achieve is really relying on our departments as well as our partnering organizations, so providing shuttle services that are convenient for our residents and our festival goers from three park locations, excuse me, three park locations for free shuttle services throughout the day, of course, as far as traffic control is concerned, looping in both the Police Department and Code Enforcement to ensure that there is minimal impact, as much as possible minimal impact, and to mitigate any sort of liability that could result in increased traffic in those areas. So we are looking at a full and comprehensive plan that addresses all of those traffic and safety concerns.
Very good, okay. And next question about the promotion, okay? Have you, the city, promote this event since this is the first annual, okay, Spring Festival? So maybe a lot of people don't know, residents don't know, okay, or other people, other residents in different area, they don't know. So how we promote, okay, this event, so we can have a lot of people can come to enjoying this festivity with all different culture thing, okay? And second thing is, have we invited a school? We have seven school districts, should we, okay, go to invite the school superintendent and their board member to see they can join this festival? Because we are serving the same population, so maybe we can invite the parent, okay, bring their children to have this kind of culture event to appreciate each other. So I think there's a couple of things we can kind of help out to promote this event, so the people to know, because a lot of time people say they don't know we have an event, so hopefully we can promote this.
Okay. I'll answer the first question regards to promotion first, and then I'll address your question regarding school board invitations and school invites, second. So regarding your question about promotion, the city is utilizing some of its more traditional sense. Social media is now traditional. I think a lot of cities and other agencies rely on social media. Another aspect of promotion that we're attempting to leverage too is Yelp. Yelp does have a quite a bit of following. They do a monthly newsletter. They actually reached out to us to provide that opportunity to reach their, I believe they said they have 140K subscribers for their monthly newsletter in the San Gabriel Valley, and then they'll also extend that same advertisement featuring our festival in the L.A. metro area as well, close again to that 140K subscriber list. In addition to that, putting that on their message boards, and then absolutely relying on our community partners to assist in the promotion for this event, because it truly is a community-driven, a community-centered, community-focused event. Regarding your question about the school districts, we absolutely can reach out. As far as flyers and a booth invitation, those have been extended, and we are slowly getting some of those in. The big push right now, or not so much the big push right now, but where we're receiving a lot of responses right now are food booth vendors, but we'll definitely circle back to those schools to make sure that they have that information, as well as to some of the organizations and clubs that are within the school districts, because that will give them the opportunity to promote as well.
Okay. My last question will be, have you sent out the flyer to all the senior, okay, complex, okay, and our senior centers, or make sure all our senior know we have an event, they are welcome to attend?
We will ensure that they are welcome to attend and that they feel that they are a part of this community and a part of this event, just as any other age demographic in our community.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and I hope to see you all there. I'm really looking forward to the Spring Festival. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to oral communications. We will now move to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out your yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Any emails received by 5:00 p.m. have been posted to the city's website. All emails are part of the public record. If you would like to speak regarding the public hearing cell tower item, you can do so during the public hearing portion of the meeting. How many, how many speakers do we have?
We have five speaker slips for general comments, Mayor Protam.
Okay. In the interest of time, we would like to set speaking time for three minutes. Do I have a consensus?
I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we want to go ahead and start.
Our first speaker is Herman, followed by Tanya Limon, followed by Mike Greenspan.
He likes to take away our public time. Mommy Rosario Diaz wants to do the same. Well, we know what kind of racist discriminatory issues we have here, right, public? You're deprived your five minutes. Five minutes to be heard. Down to three minutes. Why is that? Because we have people in our society that are racist and deny the public the right to be heard and opineate on what's good for our swell city and what is bad, just like this special event. During a time, as you see, most of the seats here in City Hall are taped up. So from a month from now, things are going to get better with COVID? Apparently not, because if they did, Hilda Elsa Lee's would have taken care of the problem. Her and that idiot Barbara Farrar. However, the country's first idiot president troubling is the statements imploring others to shoot the nigg. Let's this country be a B-I-T-C-H-F-K-D for another four years. It goes on and on, because never in the history has a end person done anything right. So why don't you just censor me now? You don't like the First Amendment? You don't care about our Fourth Amendment? You don't care about the Second Amendment? You don't do shit for the veterans that sleep on our streets daily? And the elderly that even Mr. Wu, Tony Wu, doesn't even talk about the disabled elderly? How the fuck they gonna get to the event in March? So now we have the tyrannical, poignantest hand that used to...
Tanya Limon, followed by Mike Greenspan, followed by Lorraine Limon.
Twenty years, but consecutively for the last 13 years. I've brought, I wanted to bring to your attention a incident, a couple of incidents that's been happening in the city with a family that had formerly held office here for West Covina and are acting above the law and are hiding from the consequences of what they've done. There's a couple of issues between, that's going to be presented to the school board and also to you guys, but I wanted to let you guys know what's going on. My son was assaulted at West Covina High School on this past Tuesday. He was driven there by the mother of the former council, I'm sorry, not the former council member, but she's a family member, was driven there for the sole purpose to assault my children. That, the school, the school district or the school there, they did handle it properly as much as they could, but this person was circumventing the processes and procedures put in place to protect children like myself, like mine, as well as other students. On Thursday, they came to my home, tried to break in. They destroyed my property, and they also, I had to chase them away from my house. They were trying to hurt my children to break into my home, and they were driven there that day by their father. It wasn't just those students or those children also, it was other ones that they had picked up from the community. I'm bringing this to your attention, because it also took the Police Department 30 minutes to get to my home. I had to call 911 three times for them to get there and before they got there. And when they did get there, I don't feel like they did a comprehensive investigation because of who this family is. They were not arrested. The father was not arrested. The mother was not arrested on Tuesday, when the police were there. And I believe it is because of the former influence of this family that they may have over the city or their connections. And I just wanted to bring this to your attention, and I will be here at every meeting for however long I have to, until there is change made. I will be at the school board until there is change made. I have all of these people here in support of me who are afraid for their children as well, who are afraid for their children as well, because we should not have to feel like this. My children were afraid to go to school. I had to sleep in a hotel Thursday night because of what this family had done and the way that they acted. They should not be acting like they are above the law, but they should be exemplifying the standards of what we as West Covina, I love this city. I came back to this city. My student, my kids have gone through since kindergarten to this city. I do not want to be a part of something like this or for people to look at this, like you send your kids to West Covina High School, like why not South Hills? You know, and that's not what, that's not what we're looking for, right? We're looking to better our city, to have more students, to get our enrollment numbers up, and that's what I try to do. But when we have things like this and parents like this, I know my time is up. My mother had also signed in to speak, and she would like to yield her time to me, if that's all right with you guys, so I may, please?
That's fine.
Great, thank you. And again, I did press charges against those boys. They went to that family member's house, okay? And I don't want to say his name, because he's already been posting it all on the forum, but I know you guys know who I'm talking about, because he regularly criticizes you guys. So I'm pretty sure you know who I'm talking about. He, they went to go and present the citation to the boys, because I did press battery charges, and he did not even allow the police in his home, said that they were not there when they do reside there. So he is hiding them from the consequences and from my children getting the justice that they deserve. And all the other students, I'm not just worried about mine, because if it could happen to my children, it could happen to anybody's children. Bullying is getting out of hand on social media. It is out of hand. I've been threatened on social media. My kids have been threatened. It's just, I really feel like the city needs to step in where they can and where they need to, to prevent this from happening, to prevent this from happening again. So with the Police Department, the response time, that was really bad, really, really bad. I had to protect my home with a bat. That's how I had to, because these students were so aggressive, these kids were so aggressive. They assaulted my neighbor down the street who had pulled in to prevent them from attacking my home, and he's a retired police officer. He did give a statement to the police, but they pushed him. They surrounded his car, they were hitting his car, and it's because that they do not feel any consequences because of who the family is. And that's what they're doing. And I really, really need your support and really need a plan of action to be put in place to stop this. So I implore you, please, if there is anything that you can do to keep my children safe, to keep the other children safe, I really need you guys to step up and to please act. Thank you.
Welcome. Excuse me. Does she have your information?
Yes.
Does she have your phone number, address, and all that? Okay. Thank you.
I got you. I got you.
Okay.
Mike Greenspan, followed by Lorraine Limon, followed by Jim Rudolph.
Mike Greenspan, and let me give a good old North Florida perspective to the previous speaker. Buy a gun, after all. They work wonders. They stop lots of crime, after all. Go pick on some little old lady in the panhandle of West Florida, and she'll pull a pistol out of her purse, and you won't do it again. Now, oh, and as far as that bigoted Lutheran minister, yeah, I want to thank him for mentioning Jesus, even though Jesus would get no Christmas dinner at Tebow's Timoquana Country Club in Joksville. And I remember the Lutherans wouldn't let me referee their basketball tournament, because I'm not one of them. I'm Jewish. Fucking bigots, after all.
Your time is running. Continue.
Thank you. Lorraine Limon, followed by Jeff Rudolph, followed by Mike Brown.
I'm Lorraine Limon. I'm the mother of Tanya Limon, and I yielded my time to her. So there's things I want to say, but if she already used my time, then I can't say anything, right?
We'll take care of it. We're going to address this issue.
Okay.
I'd like to speak, I mean, but we did yield the time to her, so...
Yeah, so I can't speak then, because I already yielded the time?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to make sure you guys take care of it, okay?
We're going to work on it.
Yes, I'm a long time, I was a long time resident, and the bullying has to stop. And my grandson, one of my grandsons, he's autistic, and they picked on him, and I don't like it.
I understand.
So that's why, that's why we're here, and West Covina needs to, needs to address this.
Yes.
I am so, so upset about all this and how my, my daughter, she's a single mom, and how they had to come to her house, and she has to be going all over the place to file a complaint here, file a complaint there, and we're going to keep doing it until somebody does this, okay?
Okay.
Please, please.
Thank you.
And you know exactly who this family member is, okay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay?
Thank you.
Jim Rudolph, followed by Mike Brown, followed by John Shoemaker.
Jim Rudolph, representing the Fire Management Association. I'm here to speak just briefly about Agenda Item Number Three. We realize that fiscal decisions that you make for the city are always the most crucial ones. Tonight, I'm here just to reassure you that the process has been met. Staff has worked hard with the Fire Management Association to make sure that we came to a fair conclusion in our meet and confer process. We know that you'll give this item fair consideration, and we look forward to your positive vote. I'll yield my time.
Thank you, sir.
Mike Brown, followed by John Shoemaker.
Good evening to Mayor Castellanos, Mayor Protam Diaz, and the city council members. I'd like to thank you tonight for your consideration in approving the fire management contract in Agenda Item Number Three. It's been over seven years since we've been in contract. This took a lot of work to get this proposal put together. I want to thank the city manager, Helen Tran, and all of the other people involved in the process that worked hard to come to this fair agreement. Again, I want to thank each of you tonight for the consideration of approving this contract between the city and the fire management. Thank you.
John Shoemaker. Bill Robinson.
Happy to report that the GOV's indoor mask mandate expires tomorrow, some think, but totalitarian media brainwashing, fear-mongering will likely be reimposed after November's election. I can't understand why the council believes we can't afford a brand-new health department that replaces presently paid-for L.A. County Health Services. For example, the city's former senior congregant meal program stopped two years ago, but we cannot afford a graffiti removal service citywide, which Athens Service Waste Monopoly may soon provide, using higher franchise fees, utility taxes, increased costs borne by city residents. Council doesn't care that residents will be paying more and getting less graffiti removal. The additional financial burdens mean nothing, but city's higher-cost cable service and waste disposal costs need explanations. All the COVID-19 vaccines are bioweapons. Public health agency-induced medical tyranny must end. Fascism, that is egregious government and private employer interference with our U.S. Constitution and human and civil rights, secured by natural law, embodied in the Nuremberg Codes, you know, and state constitutions. Codes, you know, and state constitutions, you know, it must end. Defeat vax mandates, defeat pervasive medical censorship spread across the land by pharma-monopoly advertisers. Saturday, March 5th, a Los Angeles trucker rally will commence. That'll solve this problem. Stay tuned. The death rate for those aged 18 to 64 has risened at an astonishing 40% over pre-pandemic levels. Last year, according to the CEO of Indianapolis-based insurance company One America, quote, "We are seeing, right now, the highest death rates we've seen in the history of the insurance business." "Not at One America," said Scott Davidson, head of a $100 billion insurance company. There, there have been a spike in lymphoma cancers, miscarriages, autoimmune disease, blood clots, heart attacks, strokes, more victim autopsies of the COVID tragedy need to be conducted to find information for grand juries or task force investigations. Death rates unprecedented and higher than even the worst years of World War II leads me to propose that maybe we could build a COVID-
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
-holographic museum-
Thank you, sir.
-on the BKK property-
Thank you.
...provide for future West Covina tourism.
Bill Elliott.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Your Honor. I want to talk about a couple of things tonight. First of all, this lady whose kid's involved in this thing with you-know-who, you know, she obviously has a lot of support. My advice would be, you know, leave him alone. Leave that family alone, because I think they're dangerous, they're capable of a lot. Please be careful. She's the author of confusion. He's been kicked off every social media page in the city. He's vile. He's insulting. He's rude. He's vulgar. Just leave him alone. Ignore him. And I don't think you have to worry about anybody rousing a lot of support for any of them, and I hope the city council can do whatever they can do and help in that regard. Athens, wow. I have such mixed feelings about Athens, and I probably shouldn't say anything, but I'm going to anyway. First of all, Athens is the Cadillac plan, and if we didn't have Athens, I think we would all miss it. And that's in no way an endorsement for Athens, because they, frankly, they pissed me off a couple of times, but they are the Cadillac service. I have a 103-year-old neighbor who cannot bring his trash cans from, from the house to the street, and it's understood on that route. That driver stops the truck, gets out, opens the backyard gate, brings their trash, puts it back when he's done. You know, I don't know what, if we're going to get that from another, another trash company. Athens is pretty responsive to, you know, special requests. We have the big cleanup once a year. I don't like the fact that we pay as much as we do, but nothing is free, and everything's getting more and more expensive, and I think they're a pretty responsible community member as far as things they've done for the city, philanthropy and whatnot, and I don't think we would have the concerts in the park without Athens. And so I wouldn't want to have to be one of the people making that decision about Athens or not, or any decision, because it's very complicated, and I'm glad it's not me. We had a storm today. We had a lot of rain on my way, my commute home, and we need it, and the winter's not over yet, and that 80 degrees, that was just them teasing us, and I'm looking forward to another beautiful day in West Covina. Good evening.
Thank you.
I have no further speaker cards. Mayor Protem.
Okay, thank you. City manager, would you like to respond to any public comments?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council, and members of the public. I'll try to respond briefly to some of the comments that will require some follow-up. Armando Herman, I'd just like to say that we, in these chambers, affirm the dignity and the worth of everyone who comes here, and we defend constitutional rights. The Limons and the other speakers that were talking about this incident, I'm aware of it. I will review your concerns with respect to the response times and the police department response with the chief, and we will get back to you about those things. Assistant Fire Chiefs Rudolph and Brown, just like to publicly thank you for your service to this community. Two of our speakers tonight, Mr. Robinson and Mr. Elliott, talked about the Athens contract, which is on agenda for council consideration tonight. There's some new state laws which transfer many, many new responsibilities to the city. We'll review those requirements and that contract in some detail. We have a report for you tonight on that agenda item when it comes up. I think that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Go ahead, council.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, I have a question, okay? Maybe Chief, Chief around? Chief, will you come down, please? Okay, I want to know why it took 30 minutes, okay? And I know right now supposedly our police very proactive, okay, and we, we don't have led too many complaints compared with a couple of years ago, so maybe we can give us some, okay, okay, rather than waiting, the, maybe you can tell us what happened? And by the way, regarding their report, do we do anything, try to mediate, okay, the situation before it escalates out of control? So would you, would you please share with us?
Well, first of all, you know, obviously I wasn't there. I have someone looking up the numbers right now. I just don't have them in my hands, so I, it's kind of hard for me to respond to the response times, because I don't know what happened, but we'll certainly share that information. With respect to giving favoritism to any family, I've prided myself on not doing that. I, I don't care if it's a council member, I don't care if it's, my family member, it doesn't matter. I don't play favoritism to anybody. But not being out there, I don't make the arrest, so now I have to work backwards, find the call, find out what happened, and find out what they did. I did hear about the call, so I knew that was pending, but we have sergeants, lieutenants, and all those people there to look at the situation, to determine if, if an arrest is appropriate at that time. I wasn't there, so I'm sorry, I'm not going to be able to answer that question, but I'll get the information, and I'll definitely get back to the family. I can say this, I believe that incident happened last week. I received not one call from the family or anybody else to be able to answer those questions before tonight. So tonight, they show up and they spring all this on the city without even giving me an opportunity to deal with it. So I would ask that the family contact me and at least give me a chance to respond to it, and then maybe that will help. But I'm not in their situation. I've heard some things here tonight I didn't, I didn't know about, and obviously, it's a bad situation, but we'll get to it, and I'll make sure our guys did the right thing, whether they think it's appropriate or not.
So thank you so much, Chief. So I request to have a fair investigation for the resident, okay, and at the same time to make sure, okay, and we can resolve this issue as a, as a P, especially children, okay, and the school, we want to make sure they feel comfortable, safe in the school environment. So we want to find out what this, I think they're all minor, but at the same time, we want to make sure, okay, we can, okay, smooth, okay, and solve this issue.
Oh, I agree.
And, and because you see a lot of high school that have a lot of issue, okay, and we want to make sure, before anything happens, make sure they feel safe.
Absolutely.
Okay? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. All right, that's enough. Okay, let's move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. I do have just a couple of items to share with you this evening, and I know you've got a busy agenda. I'll be, I'll be quick about it. We are continuing with our COVID-19 testing services. The demand has fallen way off, so we shut down the site here at City Hall. We just didn't think it was justified to continue. We are still running it at two locations, Shadow Park Monday through Friday, and at Cortez Senior Center Tuesday through Sunday. So if anyone has need of those services, they're, they're free, and we would encourage people to take advantage of that, and we'll, we'll be there as long as there's a need for it. Next slide. The Homeless Services Authority has been focusing on its once-a-year point-in-time homeless count, now scheduled for Tuesday, February 22nd. There's still a need for volunteers. Should anyone be interested in that service that evening as a volunteer, I think the hours are 8:00 PM to midnight or a little later, but it's critical for us that we can continue to quantify and address that, that situation, those problems. Next slide. At your last meeting, the council asked us to do a quick overview in terms of a park assessment. The staff did that. The city has a total of 16 parks, and since then, staff made visits to all those parks and identified a number of opportunities for immediate improvement. Specifically, we had some trees that were just one good wind away from going, and in the last windstorm, we had some pretty severe trees come down against some houses, and so we acted right away to mitigate those hazardous trees. Over the course of the next two weeks, we're going to make a second round of those grounds, and we'll have a report to you at your next meeting as to trying to quantify what the highest priorities are and the cost of those things. Next slide. We've begun the budget process. Seems like it's always audit time or budget time. We've begun our annual budget process. We'll be presenting it to the council and to the public in May, and this year, we're going to change the format slightly, and we're going to emphasize performance measures, which I think is a hallmark of a well-run organization, and I'm proud to say that we're moving in that direction. Next slide is about our fire department. Our department does a really good job of responding to mutual aid, and one of the things that enables us to do that through the USAR program, the Urban Search and Rescue Program, is we have to have our fire department members qualified at the technician level. The department's been asked to join a FEMA California Regional Task Force, Team Two. We've got 20 of our members that are certified at that technician level, and we're expecting a busy fire season, so we'll be joining the cities of Downey, Santa Fe Springs, Compton, Torrance, and El Segundo, and we will be deploying a minimum of four members to those types of incidents. Next slide. I just wanted to highlight and compliment some field service work that our public services crews are doing out in the field. They're tending to a lot of housekeeping items, painting the noses of the medians, and cleaning up the debris, and it's a marked difference, and I'd like to thank them for making the extra effort. This next slide is a rendering of a project that the developer's calling The Grove at Merced. It's on Merced, 1912 Merced, right adjacent to the Hurst Ranch facility. This was previously approved by the city as a senior assisted-living facility, but maybe a mark of the COVID crisis, the developer that got that project approved decided not to proceed with it, because people just weren't needing or wanting to send their loved ones into a congregant care-type facility. So this latest proposal is for a 39-unit multifamily residential two-story townhouse project. They will be releasing the initial study and the mitigated net deck of environmental impact to the public in pretty short order, and that'll be coming to the planning commission for hearing. Lastly, just wanted to congratulate the Rams. That's all I've got this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, does the council want to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I'm going to pull the, okay, the Agenda Number Two.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, just so, do I have a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items One through Five with the exception of Two?
All motion.
Second.
Real call.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado, a second by Councilmember Tabatzabi to approve Consent Items One through Five with the exception of Number Two.
Councilmember Tabatzabi?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Motion approved, right?
Motion approved.
Motion is approved for zero.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, and Agenda Number Two, okay, is on the consent calendar, but I think, okay, our finance director should give us some kind of brief, so we can understand if we hit the target based on our budget on our second quarter, so are we moving, okay, to the third quarter, the fourth quarter? So how we, okay, by everything, including overtime, this and that, will be hit into the target. So go ahead, would you please give us some brief?
Okay, sorry. Yes, so this is the mid-year quarterly review, so keep in mind that at this point, we're always going to have a lag in our revenues. And so at this point, even though we're halfway through the year, we've only received about 30% of our revenue through December. We have seen some of those categories trending over budget, such as charges for services, specifically facility rentals, licenses, and permits. That includes building plans and plan checks, and then fines and forfeitures, specifically late penalty payments, and then cost recovery with fire mutual aid. And so this report before you includes a proposed budget amendment to increase our revenues a little over $1 million to adjust for those actuals that are coming in over Looking at expenditures for the mid-year, most of the departments are at or below 50% of budget. However, the full impact of the salary increases as a result of the MOU contracts is not reflected yet in the mid-year, because that did not occur until November, so we only had one month of that. So we'll see the real impacts of that on the third-quarter review. However, as of December 31st, 50% of the year was complete. $36 million, or 51% of the general fund budget, had been expended. Most departments are at or below budget, as I previously mentioned. The ones that were over include HR, which is over for professional and legal services associated with the MOU contracts, which is not a regular occurring expense that we take on. The next is police, which is slightly over, and that is in overtime.
I'm sorry, okay, and so basically, police, 1.1, okay?
Yes, it's slightly for-
Can you go back to the, okay, so why HR is 14.1, that higher of over budget?
Yes, and that is for their legal services associated with all of our MOU contracts. So that is not something that we typically take on annually, and the budget was a rollover budget, so it didn't account for one-time expenses that we would expend for services that needed to be done in order to conclude all of those agreements.
So basically, because we are working on the, all the different group, so we using the attorney, okay, to work on this, so that's why, okay, it's over the budget?
Correct.
Okay, so, but so, since we go into three years, so next year, this 14.1 won't happen, right?
It shouldn't be a reoccurring thing, because we intend to get all of our agreements.
It's an agreement for three years, and we work on the three-year contract, so the 14.1% of increase should be, not be recurring.
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. You have a question?
Okay, and then just to summarize the mid-year, actual revenues were $21 million, less expenditures of $36 million, so it is negative for the period, which is typical for this time of year, and I have a chart here to show. With the exception of last year, because we had received the revenue due to the pension bonds, we're actually better than prior years at $15 million. Typically, we're at $17, $18 to $16 million, and the negative for this time of year just of how our cash flow comes in. So we're up for the mid-year. And moving on to, what is also included in this item is a budget amendment. Part of this item includes the allocation of our last year's unassigned fund balance per our policy. We had over $7 million available in unassigned fund balance to be used, and per policy, that is to be transferred to the CIP fund, and then to be used on other post-employment benefits, and staff is recommending that be used on our supplemental retirement plan. So that budget amendment is included into this. We also are proposing to add the $297,000 for the one-time pay that was for the miscellaneous groups that council approved last fall, and then increase mutual aid overtime in order to offset the revenue as well. So the net impact of that is really negative, or actually positive, for the city in terms of, of that revenue source. And then add $15,000 for tuition reimbursement, because it wasn't included in the original budget, and then, of course, increase legal services, as I just explained previously, because HR is running over in that category. And then this also includes the reflection of that $1 million I addressed earlier for budget versus actuals to increase revenues. Excluding the unassigned fund balance, the overall net impact of this would be an increase in the budget of $400- Excluding the unassigned fund balance, the overall net impact of this would be an increase in the budget of $442,000. And there's a summary of that on this page. We originally started the budget at net. And then after several amendments, we were going into the negative, over $700,000. But with this budget amendment, without the use of the unassigned fund balance, because that is using reserve, our fund balance from prior year, we'd be looking at reducing that down to $284,000. So with that, I would take any questions.
So the question is, okay, on the second quarter, what we hit on the target? On our spending and our, I know our revenue hasn't come in because the sales, okay, property tax, okay, and the so's heavy-duty income, okay, and so, but, okay, you should give the overall because everything detail is so complicated for us to kind of digest, okay, and most possible CPA would be easily to understand. But overall, we want to understand, okay, are we hitting the, okay, the budget spending? At the same time, we don't have too much negative. Are we going to the surplus? Are we going to balance? Okay, and second thing, I want to know, our fund balance, okay, our reserve is increased, decreased, okay? So what is our current finance situation?
So to address the first question, we were halfway done with the year and exactly at 51% of expenditures. So with that, our target for the budget seems to be right on for mid-year. In terms of are we increasing reserves? If we keep this trend for the rest of the year, we may see an increase in reserves. But we'll have to wait and see what the revenue comes in at, since we'd only received 30% of our revenue. But as terms of expenditures, we were on target pretty much with 51% for 50% of the year.
So even we have 10 police officers, okay, and 10 maintenance, okay, and 10, okay, part-time co-enforcement officers. So right now, we are still spending in our budget?
As of mid-year, we were now keeping in mind that we hadn't fully hired all of those employees.
Because we don't, cannot recruit right away with 10 people. Some retire and some people fit in, and with a P1, P2 entry level, okay? So in that way, we don't have the full staff yet. Am I right?
That is my understanding. I don't know where we are on the staffing.
And why is our current fund balance?
I'm sorry?
Why is our current fund balance?
The current fund balance?
I remember in the audit committee, you told us $24.5 million.
That is of last fiscal year. It was around $21 million. And then the calculation to get us down to the unassigned left us with $7 million because of how the, you have to keep 75% in reserve, and then another 25% in reserve. And so we were left with $7 million to actually spend on CIP and then other post-employment benefits.
Would you please, you move your head, I always have to.
Sorry.
Okay, well, you have to do the high and sick. So basically, okay, on all this number, we are okay, we're pretty healthy?
We're okay for the mid-year. We'll see the full impacts in the third quarter when we actually start seeing more of that revenue, and then the impacts of all these increases in salaries that we just...
So the second quarter will be end of December 31st?
Correct.
Now we're moving the third quarter would be March 31st?
Yes.
Okay, and then last quarter will be to June 30th, and we will, we have to work on next year's budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
A motion to approve?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Wu and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viado on item number two. Councilmember Tabatzbi?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item is approved for zero.
Okay, so now we'll move on to public hearings. This matter set for, public hearings consist of an appeal of the decision by the Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number 20-03, a request to install a 60-foot-tall freestanding wireless telecommunications facility located within the Valencia Heights Water District property at 3540 East Cameron Avenue, adjacent to Heritage Park. Will the city clerk verify proper legal notice has been given?
Proper legal notice has been given, Mayor Protem.
Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing on the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny conditional use permit number 21-03. There will be, there will first be the presentation of the staff report. Then we will hear from those in favor of the appeal, then those opposed. Finally, the appellant will have the opportunity to give rebuttal to any testimony received in opposition. Mr. Carney, who will give the presentation?
Our planning manager, Joanne Burns, will present this staff report.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem Diaz and members of the City Council. The subject site is highlighted in red in the projector. It is the Valencia Heights Water Company property. It is surrounded by R1 zone properties with residential development to the east, residential development to the north and south, and the Heritage Park to the west. The residential uses are more than 100 feet away from the antenna-supporting structure. Specifically, the nearest residential property is located on a private street in an incorporated Valley County area on the east side of the proposed property. And to be exact, it is located approximately 176 feet away from the antenna structure. The proposed wireless facility is located about 211 feet away from the nearest homes, the nearest house itself on the east side. And it is located more than 100 feet away from the residences to the south. These are, on the projector, are the two findings, finding A and finding F, the conditional use permit that the Planning Commission was unable to make. The Planning Commission denied the application because they felt that the applicant did not provide them sufficient evidence that the site would be the best site for the wireless telecommunications facility. And they denied, they were not, they were not able to support finding F because they felt that the proposed mono-eucalyptus tree design will not accomplish the reasonable stealthing since it is taller than other trees in the vicinity. Here are the proposed plans. The facility will be located to the west of the water tower, the water towers. And it is a 817-square-foot lease area. The proposed mono-eucalyptus tree is 60 feet in height. And the proposed ground equipment will be screened by CMU block wall that is eight feet in height. There is also an above-ground generator next to the equipment cabinet, the walled equipment cabinet area. The applicant prepared photo simulations and balloon tests in, from seven different locations surrounding the site. The locations are identified in the aerial map on the projector. The top location is, was taken from the hiking trail at Heritage Park. This was location A identified on the map. And the bottom photographs were taken from, along Cameron Avenue. And this is B identified on the map. So the photographs are C at the top and D identified in the map. The top is, was taken from the residential at the east of the site. And the bottom photographs were taken at the trail entrance on Cameron Avenue.
I had a quick question. The arrows that are pointing, is that the height of the proposed cell tower where the end is? Just wanted to verify.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is, let's see. The top photograph is at the trail entrance on, at Hillside Drive. And the bottom is along the trail facing northeast of the site. And then this one is the balloon test for along the trail facing northwest of the site. And this is G, I believe.
I'm sorry, Joanne, is the right hand side is the rendering for the proposed look like?
The left side is the balloon test. So in order...
How about the right side, the right side?
Yes, I'll get there. In order to do the rendering, they did a balloon test so that they can identify the height of the mono-
I understand, I'm asking for right side, is that what the, will look like, like this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then this is the justification plot, LTE justification plots that the applicant submitted. To the left is before the site, and to the right is af, if, after the site, if the site is constructed and approved. With this, the Planning, the Planning Commission's recommendation is to, for the City Council to adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's decision and denying the conditional use permit. If the City Council has any questions, staff is available to answer.
Any questions?
And I prefer to listen to applicant and then the public, okay, comment, and then I will ask question. Save time.
Well, at this time, I will open the public hearing on the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny conditional use permit. There will first be...
Mayor Protem, if I may, we have the applicant.
Oh, okay.
At this time, the applicant is here and would like to speak.
Okay.
You can come, yes. Jessica.
Evening, Councilmembers. I wanted to start off by thanking you guys for hearing our appeal today, and also thanking staff, you know, for working with us for the last almost year on this project and recommending approval previously. We've worked hard on this site to choose a location that we could stealth the equipment as best as possible. We've worked on a design that mitigates the additional height. We've got a mono-eucalyptus tree with additional foliage leaves. And we've also agreed to add some additional live trees near the location to help kind of blend it all in together. And I wanted to just point out, I know that, I was at the previous hearing, you know, one of the issues raised was the fact that there didn't appear to be a need for AT&amp;T to have this site. It wasn't necessary for the network. So I wanted to just upfront let you guys know, and we have some slides, you saw the propagation maps. That's why we're here tonight, right? This site is absolutely necessary for our network and to continue to provide robust service to our customers, your constituents. It also will help support our first net, band 14 coverage as well, and that's our first responder network. So I know that the city of West Covina doesn't utilize that, but surrounding cities do, and they do come in and out of West Covina. So I want you guys to consider that. And I've got Jessica here. Jessica's one of our vendors, and she's worked with staff and has a presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I did go ahead and put a presentation together for you guys. I'll just start it.
Is it working?
Okay, perfect. So the first slide that you're seeing here is the site purpose. This, as Dan mentioned, the site is going to provide a first net. And what that is, it's a band 14 for the first responders, just so they have their own frequency for the facility. The site is also going to provide a large coverage gap for the area. Sorry, can't see it. And then, as mentioned in previous meetings, the wireless facility is going to provide additional coverage. And this is due to the residents in nearby working from home now with COVID and the increasing number of clients using their cell phones versus landline. And that's what this facility is going to provide. This is a site elevation. It's a little different than the one that was in the staff report. This shows that AT&amp;T is providing a three-branched mono-eucalyptus tree. We had previously proposed a single branch broadleaf. However, the city planning department had requested that we complete a three-branched mono-eucalyptus tree as well as plant additional mono-eucalyptus trees, so that way the area would blend in, the site would blend in. They also requested that we provide a CMU wall closure to help stealth the cabinets that are going to be on the ground. From previous planning commissions, there was a concern about graffiti. We did take that consideration, and we are installing climbing vines on the CMU wall. And then this will help deter those items. And then, these are photo simulations that the planning, the planner had mentioned previously. These are just showing the proposed wireless facility and how it blends into the surrounding area. This is taken off Cameron Avenue, Cameron Avenue, which is the residential community across the Water District's property. Maybe I'll go to the next slide. This view is from the Hillside Drive hiking trail. As you can see, we did the balloon test, and the facility seems to blend in with the surrounding trees. You can do the next slide. And then this view was taken near the residential property line, near the park, looking up at the facility. And then you could see our proposed wireless facility. Also mentioned, that's not in these photo simulations, is the three mono, the three eucalyptus trees that we're planting. They don't show them full grown as the tree would blend in more since the mono, the proposed eucalyptus trees will match the height of the wireless facility as well. Then you can go to the next slide. And this, this is just, this is the closest view to the eucalyptus tree. This is just above the Water District from the hiking trail. And then also, the eucalyptus trees being planted will match the size of the proposed wireless facility once they're fully grown. You know, the next slide. And then these are our propagation maps. So the slide on the left is showing the wireless facility, then the coverage prior to the installation of this new facility. You'll see the red dot in the center. That's showing that there is a lack of indoor coverage. The green is indoor coverage. And as you can see, once the facility is installed, there is a large increase in coverage of indoor facility, which is very important for AT&amp;T. Again, with residents working from home, landline's no longer a priority, and people using wireless, the residents and community members using their wireless phones. Let me go to the next slide. This is just a legend. We used it on the last one just to kind of help read the propagation maps. Again, the green shows the indoor coverage. The yellow shows the in-vehicle coverage, and the purple shows the outdoor- and the purple shows the outdoor coverage. Those coverage maps do show the severe lack of indoor coverage. And then also, there's just a little note, a little fact from the CDC that just shows the number of, the percentage of residents using their wireless facilities. As you can see, 81% of adults and 98% of teenagers under the age of 18 rely on their wireless, wireless devices. You can go to the next slide. I did put together alternative locations, so you guys can see that we did try to put the site somewhere else. Just unfortunately, the site that worked best for AT&amp;T was the Water Company property. So this location is the open space located off of Grand Avenue. The space is owned by a developer, and he plans to build residential in the future. So he did not want to lease space to AT&amp;T to build a cell site. As you can see, the map below shows the blue stars where our proposed facility will be, and the red star shows that open space that we tried. You can go to the next slide. These are the Hooper Drive water tanks. These are owned by the city property. We did try and go here as well. When speaking with the planning department, they were not confident that we would meet our 100-foot residential setback. Also, I did speak with Nicole, that she was assistant city manager at the time, in regards to leasing property, city property. And she had mentioned that we needed to come up with a substantial upfront payment, as well as agree on leasing before it was even brought to the city council. So going back and forth on terms, we just couldn't come to an agreement, as well as we're going to meet the 100-foot setback at this property. So we went ahead and looked at other places. And this is Heritage Park. This park is next to the Water Company's property. Again, we spoke with Nicole about this. We couldn't come to leasing terms. However, when speaking with our RF engineer, he did point out that the park does sit about 70 feet lower in elevation to where our proposed facility would be. So if we were to do that, the cell site would kind of sit in a bowl, and we would lose about 70 feet in coverage, which would severely hurt the coverage gap that we are trying to fill. And so, again, that was just another property that we had to rule out. And then lastly, this slide is actually current eucalyptus trees, faux eucalyptus trees that are installed in the city of Irvine. As you can see, you can't see the antennas within the facility. They're very full and luscious. And the facility that we're looking to build at the city Water Company would be looking similar to these. And then that is the last slide. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead.
I had a quick question. Was a survey taken, I mean, being all in COVID for over a year and people working at home, was a survey taken with residents complaining about coverage issue? And then I know you mentioned that, oh, the police and fire with that. I haven't heard our police and fire mention anything about services, so I wanted to know those two things.
Sure. So the propagation maps are done. It's a, it's a robust industry map that all carriers use across the board to determine service. So it's not, that map takes into accountability all their customers that they have. And then that's how those maps are created. So that map showed that there was a lack of indoor coverage, and so, and that's what AT&amp;T needs to achieve. So then, that's where they pinpoint where we need to install a new wireless facility.
But even with a lack of indoor coverage, was it a big issue, a complaint of residents mentioning anything? And the, well, the lack of indoor coverage, this is, pertains to all companies, not just AT&amp;T, right?
Right.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, I have a question. It's about, okay, eight feet, okay, above ground. My understanding right now, all the cell tower requires underground. So why you are eight feet with block wall, possible barbed wire on the top, and you're going to check with PT, you're going to look ghetto. So why you're designed like this?
Sure. So when we, we did look into the vault option for our ground equipment, and our architect engineer stated that it wasn't possible due to undergrounding equipment at the Water Company. They did provide a letter, a stamped letter at the last planning commission as to reasons why. But part of the reason was also the water tanks have a retaining wall. So when putting the equipment underground, it was just too much pressure for the equipment underground. And then, as well as the large vehicles that are driving on the property, it was just too much pressure. We do have our architect engineer here. If you do have questions, you want to get more-
Again, okay, the problem is how you're matching with the neighborhood, with the natures of the park, okay? The view aesthetically, let acceptable for the scenery. But now you put an eight wall of, eight feet of the wall, okay, above ground. Okay, I think that will be a major issue, okay, for me to let people to see, okay, that thing is going to be there in true people enjoying of the neighborhood, okay? I think this is, okay, because in other park, okay, we request existing, okay, and cell tower, okay, they want to do some expansion. We want them to go underground, okay? Because that is what I think, okay, the requirement from all the city, okay, make sure that matching with the neighborhood, you don't have some kind of eight foot of wall, okay, with barbed wire on the top, okay? And then I think it's going to destroy the neighborhood look, okay? And the second question I have, this is 60 feet tall. But how about co-location? You're going to grow up, right? So you cannot stop them to grow for some other company you want to put on top, so you can make more money. So is that going to grow higher and higher? So that, will that be an issue for the future?
Sure. So let me answer the block wall. So I would like to point out, the enclosure is within a gated Water Company. The enclosure is, as you can see from the photo simulations, the enclosure is not visible from the park nor the residential community nearby. We are putting up climbing vines around the wireless, around the CMU block wall as well to help hide any, any design of the CMU block wall, as well as to help any graffitiing. The Water Company did mention that, in the years that he's, he's worked at that company, he has not had graffitiing issues. He's not had issues with people breaking into his properties. So it's just, you know, the, the CMU wall will be hidden, because we're within a gated community. It is not visual from the neighbors. As far as the 60-foot height, the 60-foot height is within the city of West Covina's municipal code. There is room for the existing, or a new carrier to come below AT&amp;T and co-locate on that property. As far as extending the tree, I'm not aware of any future plans to do that. We are going to 60 feet, which is within the city of West Covina's municipal code.
No, I'm just asking, if that possible, it will grow taller, okay, because co-location. And I understand the federal law that we cannot say no for them to grow higher, okay, because of co-location. If any other horizon want to coming in, they want to co-location and rent it for you, so they can go higher. Am I right?
Yeah, I mean, that's per the federal code, so I don't-
Well, that is correct.
To say about that.
Yeah. And another thing, okay, go back to the block wall. Okay, you say you cannot go underground because of what the tank's over there. But, so my understanding is that, okay, West Covina, okay, called, and that's regarding cell towers should get not close to utility, and it's the water is a utility, okay? And if we get so close, will that create an issue with the water tank and cell tower? And since they say the cell tower cannot go underground, is whether be a safety issue? I remember when I was a mayor 2020, I signed, okay, the bill that we cannot, okay, have a cell tower close to the utility. Because water is a utility, right?
That section, well, that section that you're referring to is the wireless telecommunications facility in the public right-of-way. That's a different code section.
I remember, I signed as including utility.
Yes, that, that's, that was a different code section.
Yeah, but it's utility, that, but water is utility, right?
That section, water is a utility, however, that-
Maybe the attorney, if you can answer, maybe attorney can answer my question?
That refers to cell towers in the public right-of-way. This is on private-
I understand, but at the same time, they say utility. Water company is a private company, but it's a utility company. Am I right?
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay, PJ and, okay, and he is a private company, is a, is a power company, but it's still a utility company.
Correct.
Right? So if, in that way, in this token, okay, if, okay, water company is a utility, and even this is a private company, but still it's a utility company, okay? I remember I signed that we say the cell tower cannot get close to utility.
And so that code section applies to cell towers in the public right-of-way. This is not in-
You said it two times, three times already. I'm talking about utility.
That, so there's two separate code sections for that, and we'll, we'll read it to you right now.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know why that makes a difference, whether it's a public right-of-way versus not, and if it's a safety concern with being near any utilities in general.
Exactly, yeah. This is a good safety reason. We want to make sure, okay, we will allow-
There's a reason behind it.
Cell tower, but at the same time, we want to make sure safety. You have cell tower next to water tank. It's like safe. And beside that, the aesthetic wise, okay, why cannot go underground? If you say, because water tank next to them-
Because I do remember when we requested an underground with a previous cell tower, at the end, the truth came out, because it cost more. But that's not our concern, or not our issue.
No, I understand. So per the code, we're just required to put a CMU wall up, right? That's, we're all within the wireless code for the city of West Covina. However, we did provide a letter from the architect stamped to the planning commission as to why the facility would not work underground. But again, we are within the city of West Covina's municipal code, including the CMU wall. We originally did not propose a CMU wall, and the city planner said, per your guys' code, we need to install an eight-foot CMU wall enclosure.
Do you have the rendering of that?
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah, it's on my-
The eight-foot, okay, block wall. It's like a-
Within the plans.
Like shadow hole, okay, they will have eight foot. We want them to go underground.
It's currently on the screen as well. It's not-
It's right there, down below, you see? They should be underground.
Yeah. And the generator. 60 feet.
Anyway, okay, I hear my tongue.
Okay, anyone else?
You mentioned putting in live trees. Are they automatically going to be that high to meet that? Or is it going to have to wait many years for it able to reach that height?
We are installing three eucalyptus trees per the planning recommendation. They will take a couple of years to install, to grow. However, eventually, they will be the same height as the proposed wireless facility.
But by the technology changes.
Trees there as well that are help, helping shield the existing wireless facility as well.
Thank you. Are we waiting for an answer?
You can continue on. We'll pull it up, and then we'll explain the difference.
All right, so let's continue. If there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the appeal, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have 10 speakers who would like to speak regarding their opposition.
Okay. So-
All right, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Okay, so if there's anyone that wishes to speak on the matter, please provide the speaker cards to the assistant city ma, city clerk, which has already been done. We're going to limit this to three minutes to speak in opposition of the appeal. If, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the appeal?
Our first speaker, they're not opposed to the appeal. They're in favor of, they are opposed to the cell tower. Okay. The only speaker cards I have at this time.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Mike Pennell, followed by Pauline Maxwell, followed by Susan, Susan Au.
Thank you. This is my third meeting about this. I was here a couple of years ago when they turned down the cell tower at South Hills Golf Course. Same cell tower. I was just here to listen to what was being said about it. And for what reason you guys turned it down there, I don't know. But there wasn't anybody here speaking for the cell tower. Only people complaining against having it put in. I live on Hillside, and this will be right stuck up in the middle of my view, and everybody on East Hillside Drive and Holiday, I think. The tree line in the park is here. This tower's going to stick up 20 feet above the tree line. It's going to be right in the middle of the mountains and the city lights and my beautiful view and everybody else on Hillside. All those pictures they showed you were from the park looking up, and it won't affect them. But the people above looking down, this is going to stick right up in the middle of it. And if they're going to plant more trees, it's going to be even worse. And the other thing that you, Tony, picked up on is that I was at the planning commission last week, or two weeks ago, whatever it was, that turned them down. They said there that they can put an extra 20 feet on this tower. So instead of it being 60 feet, it can go 80 feet, and once you approve it, you cannot stop them. They have the right to go an extra 20 feet on top of that. And again, one of the reasons they turned it down, which wasn't mentioned here, was there was not anybody there in favor of it. Everybody there is against it because of the view. And some people were against it because they thought of the radiation from the tower. But I'm only interested in the view. And most of the people that live on Hillside in my neighborhood have other things to do than come to these meetings and complain, so they just throw the notice that they got in the mail away. But when they wake up one morning, and there's a 60-foot or 80-foot tower in the middle of their view, they're not going to be happy. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Pauline Maxwell, followed by Susannah Au, followed by, I cannot pronounce, Vahid, V-A-H-I-D. Pauline, yes.
Okay. I'm a little bit nervous. I'm not used to come here. Anyway, I'm very much against it. My house is about 200 feet from where they want to put this. So first of all, it would really be an eyesore. You look out the front door and say, shh! There's something sticking out. It's totally ruined the whole, the beauty of the whole neighborhood. Because this is not a natural thing that belong to neighborhood. It's something like, so foreign. I don't even know how to describe it. So if that's the case, then there's a vacant lot right there for sale. Can you imagine if there is somebody sees something sticking up like that? You think they would buy something? Nobody would buy when they see something sticking out like that in, right close to, within 500 feet. And then I heard that the, no, wanted, they actually will not allow anything like that to put in residential area. So, so West Covina citizens, I mean, residents, should we get the same? Or maybe even better? We are second-class citizens, so we allow them to do whatever, put whatever they want, wherever they want? I hope not. So it just, I don't even know how to, I'm so nervous to, to say it, but just say, this is, I just hope that you guys will stand from our point to see how ugly this thing will devalue our neighborhood. You know, there's a lot of million dollars home there, but once this thing up, I don't even know if people would buy it for 500. So, so I hope you guys will put some consideration. On top of it, one of the reasons they said they want to put it up, because there's a lot of drop calls. But I have no problem with making phone calls. Actually, I read some Bible study online, you know, with my cellphone, no problem. So I don't think that would be an issue at all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Susannah, followed by Vahid, V-A-H-I-D, followed by Arturo.
Hi, city council. My name is Susannah. I, my husband and me bought the house five years ago. When we look at the house, we look at the view, we bought the house without look inside the house. We went to look at our house, we look at the view, we decided we buy the house without look inside. We went to look at our house, we look at the view, we decided we buy the house without look inside. Well, those picture, those lady show you guys on purposely explore my house view. My house was the green zone right next to the tower. They didn't take the picture. My house is a two-story building. Downstairs storage, upstairs is living quarter. And then at that area, is the phone tower is right in the middle of our view. So when we look out at every single window, we will see a huge phone tower sticking in our eye level above. I, at the beginning, before I see the presentations, I thought it will be just like a woodstake pierce in my heart. But after I see the presentation, it's like a brick wall blocking all my window. So why did we buy the house five years ago paying top price? Now I have a brick wall view. Okay, please, councillor, I hope you guys consider the presentation is misrepresenting the view. All those view they taking was at lower level or higher level, but they never come once to my property to take a picture from my view. I could just go down somewhere, buy a house. Why did I pay that much money to buy a future brick wall? And a woodstake stay in my heart? Please consider, I'm totally against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vaheed, V A H I D, followed by Arturo, followed by, I think it's Boe, B O E. Chow.
Hello. So yes, my name is Vaheed. I bought a house in the neighborhood six months ago. So I'm totally new to the city. And I just want to emphasize again, the other two neighbors that I don't know them. I bought this house just because of the view. We saw the pictures of the park, we saw the view. And then when you look at this tower that's going to be there, it's exactly ruining the view and exactly ruining the happiness of the families that are living there and the ruining the reason that people move in that area. So I ask you guys again to decline this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Arturo, followed by Boe, B O E, Chow, followed by Reed.
Hello, my name is Arturo and I'm also a resident of the nearby site that they are proposing. And yeah, I think it's pretty clear what Mr. Wu said, that it would look ghetto. Those images definitely aren't current. So like, I would be able to see what this, this tower that they want to build from my front yard. So, yeah, I don't know. I guess like just what they're echoing. And then even the neighbors that live closer to the towel, tower, like they don't feel comfortable that, the tower being there. And then for myself, I'm totally in agreeance with them. And just like a lot of things weren't making sense. I guess like those images are photoshopped because like they look nothing, those are things that, those are images that like they put on Redfin. And then when you see it in person, you're like, oh shoot. Like even the cell towers that we see, it just doesn't fit with Heritage Park. It's not even, it would probably be the greenest item there. So yeah, I'm just not against it. And you get the questions you guys have asked AT&amp;T were definitely really great. And even if it was my own provider, I just feel like we have no issues with Signal. And it's just like if everybody said, if every city wanted this because it was that beneficial, like we would be seeing so many cell towers. And I would really appreciate if you guys listened to the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Boe, B O U, Chow, Reed, followed by Yu Yu Chin.
Hi, how are you doing? I'm Boe. I'm also a neighbor from the neighborhood. I'm just curious that if the, if AT&amp;T can build a tower in the private land and then if it's okay with the, with the council, then there might be Verizon, there might be T-Mobile and everybody come and everybody can build a tower. So we will become a city of towers. And the worst thing is that I'm not an AT&amp;T user. But I live right next to the tower. So in this case, I would welcome T-Mobile to come in. So yeah, wish me luck. Thank you.
Reed, followed by Yu Yu Chin, followed by Harvey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Reed and I'm a resident of West Covina for over 20 years. And I'm here to support the resident of West Covina. So from what I seen today from the pictures, I only see the picture from the, the street view, one view from the top of the hill, but not really from the point view of the neighbors. So I'm pretty sure they would see all those three ugly eucalyptus trees. And they've been here for over 20 years, 30 years, 40 years. And I'm pretty sure their view are very gorgeous. With those three, I'm pretty sure it's just going to be an eyesore. Especially when they start to work from home nowadays, just looking out, they will see those, those, those structures. 60 foot is almost like a five-story building. That's tall. So I'm, I'm hoping you'll be, listen to the residents, what they have to say and support them. And do what is best for the resident and not for AT&amp;T or any other company. Thank you.
Thank you.
Harvey Lin, followed by Windsor Yu, followed by Rick Heng. Harvey Lin. Windsor Yu. Rick Heng.
Hi, thank you for listening to Meet City of Councilwomen and Councilmembers. I'm here to oppose the building of the cell tower on two fronts. Quite a few more of the reasons, but primarily aesthetics, right? The, I think some of the councilmen picked it up already. It's in a depression and all the neighbors are looking down at it. So that photo sim is pretty, it's not correct. It's just misleading people to think that it's going to be an eyesore. It will be, especially for the people that have to live there. I've been in that city for, I mean, we've been living in West Covina for the last 20-plus years. So live right down the street from it. We get to drive by it and see it all the time. It'll definitely stick out. My three-year-old son at the time can pick out cell towers as they're dropping down. It got a little better, but not much. So eyesore, definitely going to be a problem. The other one is significant gap. I, all the numbers that we hear, the map and people saying, hey, I don't have drops, drop calls. I don't have issues with that. I haven't seen any number. I've been here probably three times now, listening to this same song and dance, trying to figure out, you know, is there an issue there? I don't think there's one. They haven't been able to prove any numbers, right? They haven't asked the resident. They've just done their own study and haven't even probably gone in and asked anybody, have you, what is the number of drop calls you guys actually have to suffer from? So, you know, the city, well, what I heard from all the neighbors and people who are concerned about this whole effort is, you know, the aesthetic is going to take a big hit, especially the people that have to live there day in and day out. And that's a huge issue for, for the neighborhood. And then, you know, their point is, you know, you need to give it to us because it's going to improve their life. You know, without drop calls or without even showing us that there's any, that's hard to prove, how they improve their life. The only thing I can see them improving is probably someone's bank account. And it's not the city's. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jovan. I can pass him up.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here today. My name is Jovan Orella. I, I live right in front of the tower on Heritage Drive in South Hills. That was taken literally in my backyard. So I'll be, every morning I'll be looking right at it once it's built. I lived in, my wife and I, I lived in Walnut for, for over 12 years or 10 years. She lived in Walnut for 20 years. We bought our house in South Hills about two and a half years ago. As you can imagine, we paid a quite a bit of premium for that house, way more than we'll pay for our house in Walnut. And we're okay with that because the view is phenomenal. I mean, who wouldn't want that view? Everybody that come to my house, it's like, wow, this is a, this is an amazing view, right? So I, I can't even imagine what it's going to do to the value of my property. I spent a lot of money remodeling my house in the last year and a half, almost 200 grand. And if that tower goes up, I don't think I'll ever recover that, you know, expenses that I spent on the house. So I'm really concerned about that. I haven't lived there long enough, but again, you know, I put a lot of money in that house. I just, I'm really afraid that, you know, it's going to affect the value of my property. So, and that was taken literally in my backyard. That's my son's basketball court. So thank you for taking my time.
Thank you.
Allow me to speak today. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further speaker slips, Mayor.
Okay. Would the appellate like to rebut any testimony?
JD.
Good evening. I tend to agree that priority should be given to the residents, especially since aesthetics is the only consideration, basically the only consideration council has with regards to the cell tower health not being permitted. But I can't, I just can't help noticing that this qualification of ghetto was not given when it came to the Amazon project. There was a project where hundreds of cars would be creating a very ghetto atmosphere in a very residential zone. But Tony, that wasn't a concern then. Why tonight? Again, I agree. This tower is probably a misfit. But I wish council would be consistent in its evaluation of all residents' needs, not just a particular zone. One that unfortunately seems to represent your district more than possibly others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Since he addressed me, can I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, as a really quick, okay, the place on the San Bernardino Road, it was Amzoni. It already Amzoni, it's not residential. It was a honeyway, honeywell, okay, making rocket. Okay, let's Amzoni if you know. So it doesn't matter. It's okay, the neighborhood is Amzoni manufacturer. It's not going to pass the SEQA regarding the residential, that won't pass because that is potentially hazardous. So that is only fit into, okay, under commercial or, okay, on the Amzoni with the manufacturer. So that is the best use of the land, create four or 500 job. So let's, San Bernardino Road basically is a Amzoni neighborhood. So now you compare with the residential, you are compare apple to banana. So you are, you want to be banana, that's your issue, but not to council decision. So there is my rebuttal about this resident.
I have, I have no more speakers in favor or opposed. I have one speaker who is neutral.
Okay, so I'm sorry.
He's, he's not in favor or opposed. He's neutral.
Okay.
Mr. Robinson.
Okay.
I can give it to him.
Thank you. That's enough.
Attachment number three of the staff report is hogwash. The descending planning commissioners reasoning is spot on. Approval would unreasonably discriminate against Hillside Drive residents that just want to stay alive. Please deny the ATT permit request for the 60-foot eucalyptus tree antenna. If EMF high energy sending and receiving, it's probably too dangerous for the immediate neighborhood. And only 18 Hillside Drive residents have been notified and the, the site aesthetics remain unmetigated. More 5G health radiation studies are needed. There, there should be a full EIR applied to the construction under SEQA, even if, even if not legally required, just for the benefit of this residential neighborhood that is going to be exposed to EMF radiation and radiated poisons. The, the telecoms wrote the legislation that governs them. And the FCC is a, is a sock puppet of, of the telecoms. That's barely acceptable in a democratic society. Hillside Drive residents who submitted themselves to the jab could be even more harmed because their bodies are magnetized. Also, our magnetized bodies are incompatible with MRI treatment. So anybody on Hillside Drive, you know, could be magnetized and, and their internet compatible bodies and the antenna might interfere with each other and cause health effects. Anyway, a lot of the jab are trade secrets, but people know about them. And, and trade secrets aside, the graphene oxide generates, has, there, it's been, in, in the PubMed database, there's over 18,000 studies on graphene, whether called graphene oxide or hydroxide. And that's nanotechnology that's invisible to the human eye. If you don't understand the language of technology, you can, you can apply the European environmental law precautionary principle to the project because.
Thank you.
The downside is really, really bad and the, and the health effects on this neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Could be, could be dire. Thank you.
I have no further speaker slips, Mayor Protem.
Okay, let's move on. Let's see. Would the appellate like to rebut any testimony?
Just a couple of points that I wanted to bring up was a part of the planning package that we had to put together. We did have to do a community outreach back in August. And at that time, it was via Zoom with COVID. And we send out notices to 300 feet radius of where the cell site is located. And we did not have any community outreach attend that meeting. The city planner did attend that meeting as well as myself and as well as our AT&amp;T representative. And we did not have any community attend opposing or for that project at that time.
Mayor Protem, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you know how, how many residents that was within the 300 feet?
I believe it was, the, our planner should have it. 18. It's within the 300 feet that the code calls out. I also want to kind of. of bring up some points, uh, regarding FirstNet, and I know Dan, um, is also going to speak of that as well. Um, I know you had mentioned previously that, uh, West Covina police may not be using that currently. However, I just want to point out that if it is used for other LA County, Covina, Lindora, um, and it's also banned 14 is if there's a disaster, uh, you know, and other first responders are coming into the city, um, that will be a use for these, those other cities as well. And then, did you want to?
Yeah, your, your question on FirstNet was, was, was a good one. Um, the network only kicks in when there is a disaster of sorts, right? When the network is being strained. Um, and so, um, you know, that's something to think about. The other thing, uh, right now, you know, we heard some comments about, um, the significant gap and, um, the maps that we provided. Um, I know that our attorney provided a letter to the city attorney, and I think you guys got it as well, sort of explaining some of the federal law, right? And the, um, burden of proof. Um, you know, we spend a lot of time, uh, our engineers, we had an, uh, uh, radio frequency engineer submit a letter, um, signed, uh, you know, explaining the need, right? We don't go around building these sites because we want to, right? It costs us money. It doesn't make us money. Um, you know, we want to make sure that we have robust service for our, uh, our clients, your constituents, neighbors, uh, visitors, right? It's not just the people that live right, you know, right near it. It's the people that go into the park, right? It's the people that drive by. Right now, um, the coverage gap, the significant coverage gap that we're, uh, looking at is, uh, in-building and in-vehicle, right? So there may still be call coverage, um, if you're walking around outside, um, and, and you may, you know, it may be spotty, it may be okay at times. It depends on the number of users on the network, right? And as, you know, COVID has kind of proven, more and more people are on their devices, right? They're, they're relying on, on their phones. There's more and more connected devices. And our sites are sort of like a hose, right? There's only so much bandwidth, so much signal it can come out, right? And the more people use them, those, uh, those sites, their footprint shrinks, right? And so part of that modeling, that's the current modeling, right? But what we don't show, because we don't typically do it, is as the, yeah, as time goes, right? More and more users get on that network and there's more strain and that footprint shrinks even further, right? So the, the gap becomes even more significant. So I wanted to point that out. I also wanted to kind of go back to, I know you guys mentioned the block wall. Um, I, I understand your point. Um, we typically AT&amp;T stay away from that, right? There's a number of reasons. Cost is one of them. But also there's a reliability issue. Um, when we vault something, we have to also have pumps, right, that go along with it? Because when it rains, these things can flood and they have to be able to be pumped out. If those pumps have an issue, the cell site goes out. Uh, regardless, there's a generator that goes along with these sites. That cannot be underground, right? And so that has to be left outside. Um, but in this particular site, the CMU wall is not seen from any vantage point. It's covered and right immediately behind it is a huge, you know, water tank. And right next to that is another huge water tank. So, um, and, and on top of that, we've agreed to go ahead and put vines that will grow up, um, along that wall. Um, and as far as the tree goes, um, the pictures that we did show, uh, that Jessica showed of Irvine, those are actual pictures, right? That was, those are built sites, um, in Irvine, um, and they exist today that anybody can come by and, and drive and, and look at. And I think they look great. Um, you, we're going to plant other trees next to it. They're not going to be the same height right away, but they'll grow. But it would also look kind of odd if all four trees, you know, the three we're planting and others were, you know, 60 foot, right? I think it, over time, they'll all sort of grow and, and kind of change in height and, and blend better. Um, but I want to emphasize, we have a significant gap. That's why we're here tonight. That's why we appealed the original decision and now we've taken it here because it's really important to us. It's really important to our customers. I understand, we don't have a lot of AT&amp;T customers in the audience. Um, and that's, that's fine, but we do have a lot of folks that drive through that area. Um, there's a whole bunch of folks, I'm assuming, that, um, you know, just haven't shown up, right?
Excuse me? Excuse me? We're trying to conduct business here. Yeah, you guys. I, I can hear it. I'm hearing, okay, well, whoever you're talking to, let's keep it quiet, please.
So anyways, I, I just, I, I want to let you know, we're, we're here, you know, um, we've worked hard with staff. Um, we've, we've tried to mitigate the concerns. We've, we've, you know, provided a lot more evidence and proof to really justify our need than we typically do. Um, you know, if you have any additional specific questions, I'd, you know, love to be able to answer them directly, but there is a huge need, right? We have a significant gap and, um, we've met the code. We originally had, you know, uh, the planning staff's recommended approval. Um, and, you know, this is really about improving West Covina and, and, and your, your cellphone coverage.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, I, I'm hearing significant gaps and I don't know what your marketing or how you reached out directly on your mailers or anything for, to have residents even bother calling in, because if they get random mail, it's not going to be impactful. So I don't know how that looks or how that went, but obviously we do have residents who live nearby here. And I have yet heard of anybody saying there is a significant gap. Um, obviously when an emergency does strike, not, it, it would affect all telecommunications. So it's, it's just generally there. But the significant gap issue has always been an issue for many, many years. Like, it's always, so let's say this even comes through, what's to say three years again later, it's the same issue. Now, um, you mentioned that you plan to have it at a different location and you mentioned that a developer doesn't want it there due to the area being residential. Um, so in this same concept, a resident mentioned that there's an open lot that possibly could be your residential. And it brings me to, um, well, obviously I don't feel that the residence that live there has any benefits to them. Um, City of Walnut, uh, has a, the distribution form that was given, it says that their communication towers and antennas shall not be located within 1,500 feet of any school, nursery, elementary, junior high, and high school, trail, park, or outdoor recreation areas, sporting venues, and residential zones. So now this actually brings me to your curiosity. Does a cell tower affect property value? I don't know if there is a study on that or maybe staff could even mention that. Um, the cell tower affect property value? Because obviously if City of Walnut says 1,500 feet away and all these things that are mentioned are valuable to having a property, does that affect?
Can I, uh, maybe, there's a bunch of questions there. So maybe the first question I think was directed towards staff, maybe about property value?
Well, I mean, actually you, you're a cell tower expert.
I'm not a property expert. I've, I've read studies where it actually enhances, um, coverage. We have a lot of
Enhances? Uh, when you say it enhances coverage, you mean signal coverage, right? Please?
Sorry, we, we have, we have communities that, uh, are pre-planned or, or lacking coverage.
You're talking about signal coverage, but I'm, I'm talking about property value. So I,
I'm saying, um, and, and that's part of the development of the homes and it's also, um, something that, that you get asked, um, to brides or communities. Some not, right? But, um, I am not an expert on property value, so I
And that, I'm, I'm really sincerely curious on that because I know cell tower has always been a big issue. Um, obviously if it's a need, signals drop and you're frustrated, especially for students who are going to school and they're, I mean, we've already been proven, we've had a whole, more than a whole year of COVID of being at home doing the internet, but yet I have not had any resident state frustration of this, um, issue. So that's why it, it concerns me. But staff, would you know?
We have not seen any studies regarding property.
Okay, thank you.
Can I answer? You had a few questions there, right?
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
You went back to significant gap. Um, so I, I don't know if anybody here is a, a AT&amp;T customer, but, um, you know, there are more than, you know, these folks here that, that, that are here present, um, that live around that area. There's, as I mentioned before, there's people that drive. There's a, you know, relatively decent sized road, right? And those people are driving past that. Um, you know, people are using these phones to make 911 calls. There are people visiting your park, right? Um, that aren't residents that, um, you know, are community members, but, um, but they are going to experience issues, right? So I just want to emphasize again that, you know, we do have a significant gap. The maps that we showed are prediction models, right? So we don't go around canvassing areas and calling our customers to find out whether or not they have dropped calls and stuff. Drop, it's, it's a complicated science, um, and I'm not an expert. But, you know, depending on the number of users and, and, and all sorts of things, even weather and, you know, topography, all these things, uh, you know, sort of play into how the coverage is affected.
And just to let you know, uh, my family and I have driven there and actually walked Heritage Park. It does have a beautiful view when you climb up there.
I'm sure
Haven't had any issue with, um, coverage or anything, but I just wanted to.
And one thing I, I want to explain, um, just to also clarify, this cell site, each cell carrier, uh, you know, with their own antenna array is, is their system. So if you're not on our network, um, you know, this site isn't going to help a Verizon customer, right? But the way we've designed the site, um, it is collocateable, right? So, and the space is down below our existing site. So it wouldn't be, uh, an increase in height. But everybody's network is separate. So because one network is working well in an area doesn't mean that the other networks aren't.
So that would actually be a good study to even know what the residents carry there because if, say, let's say, I mean, I've heard some residents said that they didn't have AT&amp;T. So I wonder how many residents in that area doesn't have AT&amp;T or how many actually does, if that's what you're saying, it's referencing to AT&amp;T.
I, like I said, there's people that drive by, there's visitors to the park, there's, you know, visitors to the, to the
Or even a study of how many residents in general.
It's, I, I, well,
Because this opens the opportunity of having all the other telecommunications to come in. So obviously there's so many networks out there, you can have cell towers out.
I don't know where the other networks' sites are near there, right? But, but, um, and I don't know if they have a problem. I, I'm not here to speak to, to their networks. I couldn't.
And my last thing, um, as we've had a cell tower in debate, what, 2020, uh, aesthetics is a key element for me. Um, obviously it's to make West Covina beautiful. And I wanted to know, how does this even meet that goal or that, pretty much meeting that goal? Because the north, uh, northwest photo that I see, it sticks out like a sore thumb. It sits on its own and adding three or four trees, it's still going to have one little area that just sticks out. So for me, that, that doesn't comply. And I, I know you said City of Irvine, the mono-eucalyptus tree looks nice. For me, it didn't. I mean, but that's personal taste. Um, but like I said, that, that has, um, an issue for me. Um, yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm, like I said, curious on the cell tower property value, but nobody has answers to that. And, um,
Can I, can I, you just asked a question about, uh, the, the visual aspect. Um, we met your, your code, right? And we've also gone ahead and gone above and beyond by adding additional features that you've mentioned. Um, and I guess I'd, I'd ask, we've, we've never, you know, we've, we've been denied twice and we haven't gotten any other, we, we need to build a cell site, right? So if city council, if, you know, the planning commission has another design type that they like.
Underground.
What's that?
Underground.
The, the, the site has to have a, a certain height to, to propagate. You cannot build it underground. That's not how it works, right? So you have to have a, in this case, we need a 60
Or make it smaller, tiny. It just, like I said, it's humongous and it's not in a good way, but it's not that great. So, yeah, that, I mean, that's like, again, my personal, um, thing. I, I'll let my other colleagues go ahead and speak.
Maybe at the top of Brand and Walnut.
Huh?
Maybe at the top of Brand Avenue and, in Walnut.
City of Walnut? I mean, like I said, I mean, they've put 1,500 feet, you know, and, and that's why I wanted to see where that, that comes in comparison. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I think we're done. Thank you. And, um, I think I'm gonna, um, go ahead and close, uh, public testimony portion of the hearing. And we already got questions. The council has already asked questions. Um, so I want to get a motion to either uphold or overturn the
Okay, uh, let me add on some of, uh, uh, councilwoman talk about aesthetic. Okay, I, I think the issue I have is, uh, the design, okay? I think the, the above ground with a block wall, okay, and potentially, okay, they're going to, okay, grow, okay, higher, okay? And that is not really matching with the nature of the neighborhood. Okay, so the issue is, again, aesthetics, okay, that have to be, okay, coexist of the nature of the park, okay, hiding and so people don't see that. Okay, and people moving there first. Okay, so in that way, uh, I want to move the motion, uh, to deny applicant on disappear and upholding the commissioner, okay, planning commissioner, okay, and deny this cell tower in that location. That's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Councilwoman Lopez Viatto to uphold the planning commission's denial of conditional use permit number 21 dash 03. Councilmember Tabataba?
Uh, yeah, uh, before I vote, uh, just wanted to, um, to say, uh, again, yeah, I, I think the, the aesthetic nature, uh, in, in that area does, doesn't, doesn't match with, with the community, uh, and, and it fails to, to meet, um, item F. Uh, I also, uh, would, would like to say that, um, as, as for the language, uh, tonight, uh, I think we can be better. Uh, and so hopefully moving forward, uh, as, as a council, um, we, we, we do a better job there. Uh, so, um, I, um, I vote, uh, to, I vote yes to deny the
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viatto?
I just want to make it clear, just, you know, thank you again for coming. But when it becomes a residence need and there is, let's say, a few years from now and residents feel there is a significant gap and, you know, by then, obviously we can consider that. But, um, for tonight, it's an aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0 to uphold the planning commission's denial.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move over to departmental regular matters. And, um, Mr. City Manager, who will present the report?
Evening, Mayor Protem and Council. Item seven concerns, um, consideration of measures to comply with California Senate Bill 1383. Our finance director, Stephanie Sikama, will present this item.
Okay.
Good evening. So Senate Bill 1383 is an unfunded mandate adopted in 2016, which established statewide targets to reduce emissions of short-lived climate pollutants such as methane gas, which emits organic waste. Compliance requires an increase in services along several different, um, programs. The first is the waste stream analysis, outreach and education, contamination monitoring, including route, route audits, data management and reporting support, procurement changes, food recovery, and organic disposal. Senate Bill 1383 and NPDES regulations have prompted changes to our refuse and recycling agreement. Starting July 1st, residents will be required to separate food waste and food spoiled paper from the trash. These materials will no longer go into the trash container, but will instead go into organic green container along with green waste. As a result, the standard residential, residential rate will increase by approximately $3 a month. The hauler would collect and recycle organic waste into compost that could be used to grow plants and vegetables. The compost would be made available to residents at city compost events, giveaways events. As a result of all these changes, there are provisions that were necessary to change our current contract due to the unfunded mandate. These include implementation of a comprehensive program to comply with these state laws, possible service addition of residential and or commercial blue barrel as the hauler see fits, enhancement of the city's ability to combat illegal solid waste haulers that might infringe on our ability to be in compliance, a change in the CPI formula from our LA region, which is what our current contract entails, to specifically garbage as a US average plus 1%. In addition to this, this would be a 3% residential rate increase in the first year plus the CPI formula and a 2.5% increase in year two plus the CPI formula, and then the CPI formula for the following years. On the commercial side, we would see a 7% commercial rate increase in the first year plus the CPI formula, a 5% increase in years two and three plus the CPI formula, and the CPI formula for the following years. And an additional five year period during which the franchise, franchise agreement could not be triggered. Some terms that the city was able to negotiate into this agreement change include updating the insurance requirements, street sweeping services, um, in the amount of about 1.2 million, servicing of the city's streets, medians for about 480,000, graffiti removal services for about 547,000, and then no contract extension. This is a breakdown of the financial impact to consumers. As I just mentioned, the 3% increase in the first year plus CPI formula, 2.5 in the second, and then three in the following years. And then on the commercial side, the 7%, 3, um, 5% in years two and three, and then year four, it would be just the CPI points one. Um, here's just an example of what the rates might look like based on current CPI averages. Here's just an example of what the rates might look like based on current CPI averages. So this is just a pure estimate. These have been slightly tweaked based on a more thorough review and impact clarification from the hauler. But we're looking at about a $2 to $3 a month monthly impact to a residential, and then about a $22 a month starting impact to the commercial side. One other thing that staff had asked the hauler to provide was the rate comparisons with other cities. Right now, West Covina seems to be in the middle of the pack. Please keep in mind that other cities will also see an increase in rates. So these are just rates as of today, but everybody is going to be impacted by the new Senate bill change. So with that, I'll entertain any questions. And the hauler is Athens is also here, some representatives, to answer any questions you may have in regards to them.
Go ahead, Tony.
Okay, the question will be, can you go back to comparison with other city?
Yes.
Okay, and so we want to apple-to-apple comparison. Okay, did you, can, can you go to the, can I see anything?
Someone can.
To the screen over here. Oh, thank you. Okay. Okay, West Covina is about 110, 120,000 population. Okay, have you compared with the similar size of the city like Pomona, Pasadena, El Monte? I don't see any other city, okay, with a similar size. Do you have a?
If I may, I'll have Athens kind of address that, because they provided these numbers based on their rates that they provide to neighboring cities.
Well, my first question, if you don't mind, are these the cities that Athens service, or this is just general?
No, those are cities that Athens and does, and does not service. They're both, there are other haulers.
Some, some is Temple City is under Athens.
Yes.
Yeah, and some other city is.
Significant increase more than this one. The Pomona, both Pomona and Pasadena are in the high 40s. They're, they're, they're $10 more per home. And El Monte is, is also in the mid to high 30s.
Can, can we have a leg comparison in writing, so we can show to resident? Okay, and, yeah, would you please? Okay, thank you.
I would like to speak to that if you'd let me for a minute. It's up to you, but I would tell you that.
Can we have her to finish, then we invite you to? Yeah, thank you so much.
Oh, she was already finished.
She was done.
She was already finished, yeah.
You're done already? Sorry, I don't know if she's already done. Okay. Well, that's quick. I like it.
Mayor Protem and City Council, my name is Gary Clifford. I want to let you know that your city staff worked very diligently over a long period of time. And I worked and presented to my board a potential solution to the issue that you're having with 1383. And the end product is that, I'm standing here before you tonight, and your 1383 increase is even less than the majority of the cities that are around you. Temple City just went through a major overhaul, as you know, and the increases were, were much different than this. And it's because of the long-term contract we have, and the ability to take that and amortize it over many years, like you would a home loan if you were to refinance and amortize it over many years, which we've done. In addition to 1383 having a de minimis impact on your rates, and I, and I don't mean to say that slightly, but we're talking over time about three bucks a home, $36 a month, to be compliant with something that the industry is saying is gonna range between a 25% and a 55% increase, that's what Cal Recycle said to you at another hearing when we were all here earlier. We were able to take that and, and move it out over time, and to be very, very specific, to help the residents and the businesses comply. One of the things I want you to know, that your residential rate will still remain below the median, and that it will every year below the median, which is, is a big deal for a big city. But when you compare apples to apples, sir, you also have to compare the service you're getting. And you're getting the bulky services, you're getting a lot more than just the trash service that you have weekly, with the city cleanups and the other things that your management has negotiated in the contract. So I stand here just to tell you that I think tonight, the city manager is asking you to move forward with this. And I would recommend that you do that. If you have any concerns, tell them, tell him about it. I want you to know that the, the city services, that's up to you. If you want the service, if you want the money, if you want to be able to, to pay your city employees, or pay us to do it, or whatever you want to do. But we provided that as a city service in a beautification program for the city to couple with the city, and to help you guys on your quest to become more beautiful. I think our history, we've demonstrated over many, many years, that we've done a good job getting your city compliant with recycling. And we want to continue that with 1383. I've had the joy of being able to do this throughout the 88 cities in LA County, in Ventura County. And I want to tell you that this particular opportunity that you have is a good one. I spent a lot of time with my board working on it. I spent a lot of time with your board to present it to you, to help you make a difference in West Covina. And that, but that's up to you. I want you to, regardless of what you do with your beautification program, you still have to do 1383. And I just, if you could go back to the slide with the seven things that we have to do. And by the way, our Executive Vice President of Hauling, Matt, is here with me. Ashley, you know, Brian Joe's our VP that's responsible for this contract. We all did this together. But I want you guys to know this. There's seven things that the city now has to do that we're gonna do for the city, if you allow us to do that. And they're very onerous things. We have to buy five Jeeps that drive on the right hand, like the old Jeeps that the mail people use, and actually audit trash cans. We have to go out and audit quarterly hundreds of trash cans, take pictures of what's, what is in them, quantify and characterize what are in them, put that in a database that we have to build for the city, so the city and Cal Recycle can go in there and make sure you're compliant. We have to do all the outreach and education, which is millions of dollars. It's not easy. You have a lot of residents, you have a lot of businesses, and we have to make sure we do that for you, even though it's your responsibility. We have to monitor every barrel in this city, and you know, there's, there's hundreds and thousands of them, and every commercial bin for contamination. We have to keep the evidence of that. And for many years, Cal Recycle is gonna come in every quarter and audit it, and we have to turn that report into you, into the city. We have to have the data management and reporting app that we're gonna have on your phone for you to use. The biggest thing is the city's procurement department. Your city is going to have to buy things differently as a result of this bill. And just the recycled natural gas, we don't run our trucks on CNG, the kind of gas that gets fracked. We run our trucks on recycled, regenerated natural gas. That gas comes from dairy farms and from landfills. So just using our trucks, which is a percentage of the increase, with that, covers your procurement, meaning you don't have to do a thing different in this city. And if you don't do it, I mean, there's, it's, it's almost an impossible task. Our vehicles alone, and the recycled natural gases they use make you compliant in this procurement division. The food recovery and the organic disposal, I just want to tell you this about organic disposal. Culver City, Santa Monica, big cities, right? Claremont's a small city. They haul their own waste. They haul their own. They have their own trucks, their own waste. They bring their organic waste to us. We're the only ones that can handle that for them at, at that size. So I just wanted, the team was here to discuss this with you. But I believe that you guys, you did such a good job last time in setting your contract up for success. It's easier this time to do it, and to include some special city services that I get to amortize over a long period of time to help you beautify the city while you're doing this. And I can be very specific if you have specific questions, Mr. City Manager. I hope I covered all the points without being redundant. But it's a heavy, 1383 was not your, I want to tell you one other thing. In a few of our cities, one that's just north of you, the city council decided, not only, like, will we take the rate, but we're actually gonna break the rate out and show what the SB 1383 rate is, as a separate line item. So because you guys didn't vote to do this, this is something that happened at the state level that you have to comply to. So we're actually gonna break the bill out to show what the local bill is, and what the SB 1383 amount is, as a result of that assembly bill. And we think that helps local government a little bit.
Any questions?
Did I miss anything?
Just a quick question. Will, for the SB 1383, will the residents, as well as the commercial, be needing an extra barrel? And do we have to do the work?
You don't have, you don't have, that's something that's really important. We are going to monitor this program for you, and if the recycling doesn't get to the level that it needs to, we will provide each resident with a blue barrel, and we will provide each business with a recycle barrel, only if we need to. So we're gonna try to educate under what we have. And the goal here is to take the food that you put in your mixed waste barrel and move it to the green barrel, okay? And we have to teach everybody how to do that. And we're, we're thinking, and Cal Recycle says, there's somewhere between 20 and 30% of the tonnage that you throw out is food, and that should go to your green barrel. So we're gonna do that. But at any point in time, if we need to increase recycling even more, it'll be our responsibility and our cost to put that blue barrel at a resident, or to put it at a business. So we'll look at that a couple of years out.
Currently, the green barrel is for the trees and?
It's for all of the, the grass, anything that you have that's green, now it's going to be for anything that is organic or organic soiled paper. So if you have pizza box, it's gonna go in the green barrel. If you have, you know, coffee grinds and egg peels, they're gonna go in the green barrel. If you have dog bone, it's gonna go in the green barrel. All of the things that you consume, you're gonna take and just slide it and put it in your green barrel, which you currently put in your black barrel.
So how many garbage cans am I gonna have in my house to separate all this?
Just two. Have your green barrel, you're not, it.
Inside the home. I only have one trash can.
That's something that, that we can also help you work on, but we're not asking you to put it in any container. We're just asking you to take it to your green barrel and put it in there with the green. So you don't, if you wanted to, you could put it in a bag, but we don't, we don't require that. We would just like you to take your food scraps, scrape them into there, and then leave it that way, and have, put your grass like you do, and we'll take care of it from there.
Go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, so basically, talking about, okay, all this kitchen waste, okay, we're going to put in the green waste, okay, container, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but a couple issue, how about the grease? Because you have a, okay, you cook, then you have a greasy, you have a grease.
Those are the green, sir.
They're going to green too?
Organic waste, yes.
So basically, all the kitchen waste in green, all the greasy, we deep fry, you have that grease, you go into your green?
Yep. We have, it's, it's some in our organic facilities, sometimes tankers of milk, or tankers of that type of food oil mixes in well to make the organic compost.
So second question will be, okay, since the people put always into the plastic bag, so you can put a plastic bag into the green barrel?
Yes, you can. We have a, that's another, I, if you want to come up there and look at it, I sent you a link to look at it. We have a bag breaker on our line, so the, the food waste goes down, and a bag breaker actually liberates, they call it, doesn't damage, but liberates what's inside of it. We ask you not to do that, but we know that some people are going to. So we ask you to use a clear bag if you can, so we can see what's in it.
So with the 1383, this guideline, we need to put all the kitchen waste not into the black barrel, that will have to go into the green barrel in the future?
Yes, sir. Not only kitchen waste, any organic soiled product. So yes.
Anything with decomposed will have to go into the green. But you okay with the resident putting to the plastic?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so in that way, you don't have a leaking oil into your green barrel, because we don't know that green barrel will be waterproof and leaking on the street, and
we have, we have a service, sir, that would replace that barrel for you, and that's part of the contract. We also have a service that will come out and clean that barrel for you. But remember, you're still, you're putting it in your black barrel now. So that's just gonna transfer to your green, and your green barrel, you know, you, any issues with that you have in the contract, in the contract, you have the ability to drop that out.
So the black barrel will basically, will just a typical not organic waste. Any other waste? Okay, people waste this and wait, okay, go into the black. If people don't recycle, they can throw all their supposedly recycled merchandise into the black one too, right?
Council member, we believe that, one of the, one of my peers here, Mr. Nicholas, talks about a wet/dry program. We believe now that West Covina will move to a wet and a dry program. All of the wet organic waste will be processed at our facility in Victorville, and all of the dry waste will be processed in the city of Industry. And when we build the Irwindale Murph, we'll decide whether it's appropriate to put a blue barrel here or not. But that'll be, that's part of this program.
I'm kind of confused. You said the wet and dry, so wet.
Wet and dry. So you're taking things out of your, currently, what's in your black barrel includes wet organic things.
That will be go to the green, that will go to the green, right?
Coffee filter, that's wet, you throw it in there, right?
Coffee, okay, and waste will go to the green one?
All goes into the green, which makes the stuff that's in the black barrel even more valuable at times, because it's less wet. You know, for, for lack of a better term, it's, it's gonna be drier.
Yeah, it will be dry.
Your, your mixed waste barrel will be drier, your green barrel, which is already, I don't know if you've noticed, but by the time trash day rolls around, it's pretty wet already from the condensation. So the process of composting has already begun in your barrel. Now you're gonna have food and other products in there to make that even happen more rapid. And it's quite a feat to take that, and then take it up somewhere and turn it into compost and bring it back to you. Again, this isn't something that you guys came up with on your own. It's something that we all have to comply to.
I understand.
It's just my job to work with you.
No, we just want to understand how people in the future, how they dump their trash. So meaning, okay, any of wet, okay, or decomposed, okay, any of the kind of organic, will go to the green one, and you okay with a plastic? Okay, and then the black one, basically, just all the waste, like a dry one, the paper, plastic, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay, and there's a go, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to, what would the threshold be for the residents to comply to meet the need where we don't need the blue barrel? And then, let's say, if we do need the blue barrel, is that additional cost to the residents and commercial?
No, there's no additional cost in your city if we, as your hauler, determine the need for additional recycling. We believe we're gonna be able to do it just the way it is. But a failsafe that your city manager and staff were thinking about is, you know, what if it changes again? So part of this program includes the ability, once we build the Irwindale Murph, which you know is breaking ground next month, to put a blue barrel if we need to. We don't know that we're gonna need to, but it'll be transparent to you from a cost standpoint. And we would go through another training about what to put in that barrel if the need be.
But we're not paying additional.
No, you're not paying one additional.
I just want to make sure.
And any of the costs that we believe would be incurred with that will mitigate through the recycling program, or that, that's on us.
Okay, thank you.
And that was something that staff fought hard for.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, I actually have some contract questions.
Okay, I'll stay here, sir.
Happy to field those if I can.
Thank you. So can you explain the, the five-year, the necessity for the five-year cooling off period, what it actually means? I know in 2023, we were set to have the ability to terminate the evergreen clause. And so can you talk about it in, in that entire context?
Yes, sir, I can. We are going to take the cost of this program, and instead of giving you like shock and awe, saying, oh, it's a 20% residential increase and a 25% commercial, we're gonna put that out over time, and do some other services. And it's gonna take us about 16 years to recoup. So you, you know, if you, if you put a new program in, and it costs $4 million, but you only have a million in revenue the first year, and as you tier that up, you're losing more the second year, you're $7 million in the hole, the third, you know how that goes. So what we've asked is that you just put another five-year stay, so we can get caught up in what we're taking the rate and moving out over a few years. And then once that, what, once that is done, go back to the program to where we've amortized that out for five years. And we should start being able to recoup some of that. So it would be inappropriate for us to take, give you a big discount, and have that discount upfront, and have that discount for four or five years, and then have not a stay in the opportunity until we were made whole by that.
So, so just, so just to be clear, so then, instead of the 2023 date, are we talking 2027 or 2028?
I believe 2028.
That's correct.
Okay. And so.
Can I try to answer that question in a slightly different context? Because I think it's important. We don't, we don't talk about relationships very much here. But I'd like to start by wanting you to understand this contract in this way. Athens is a very valuable community partner. And it's, it's a partnership which is respectful and responsible, and they have an intimate knowledge of this service, and they're quite good at it. I can tell you, having served other communities, that absolutely is not always the case. So we're starting from a very good place, as we try to get into compliance with this really onerous state law. So the way that we thought we could make this major investment in this new program work for both parties would be to save that. work for both parties would be to save that trigger period. It now runs through '23, so it's got a couple of years to go. We'd add five years to that, but we would not extend the total time term of the contract, because I know that is in our interest, that we not make this a 50-year deal. But it does give a chance to recoup those upfront costs and expenditures in all these new things that the state is requiring of us.
So just to be clear for the residents, so the earliest that the contract could terminate, say, we did, would move from 2048 to 2053? If we were to terminate that?
Yes.
Okay. So the other question I have is, it's currently for rate increases, what's the process?
The process is CPI. And quite frankly, as you know, in your industry and in other industries, CPI is not accretive. It's not keeping up with the times. CPI measures the average consumers. And by the way, I want, just a side note, CPI is going to be really high for the next few years. I don't know if you saw CPI just came out. It's 7.3%. Trash CPI is 3. The trash CPI is measured on things that are in the industry, transportation and trash industry across the nation. CPI is just what's happening with milk, bread, butter, and things like that locally. My argument, if I was on the city council, would be the trash index is more appropriate anyways. That's what's coming out in certain new contracts. So it's appropriate to change from CPI to the trash CPI, and then there's some other things in that formula that link it together. But my argument would be that when you look at a 10-year spread of the trash, it's much more steady than going up and down like that. That's my argument. I think the trash CPI is a better indicator of what the industry is doing, what the people that are working in the industry are getting, and you don't have to come back for, historically in the trash industry, we would be here, oh, insurance is going up, oh, labor is going up. This would not, this would take that ask away. And it's part of the overall package.
So I guess this question's for the city manager. So one of the red flags from the state auditor was, I mean, not only the 25-year evergreen with Athens, but getting into these long-term contracts. And so, again, you know, the additional of the street sweeping, the graffiti removal, the medians into this, again, how does that allow the city to leverage better services? Again, if now the median, the graffiti, and the street sweeping is swept into this Athens contract in 2028, as the council revisits, well, now you've kind of added some poison pills in here, right? Because now if they terminate, well, now they lose, right, this added funding, right? I already know the issue of the community bonuses that I put in. So, yeah, I guess that concern, right, for the long-term health of the city, right? You know, things change. It seems like the city is getting involved, right, is basically making an agreement for, you know, kind of a forever thing. So I guess, did you take into account what the auditor had said and your thoughts on that, if you could share that? Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may. We're quite aware of the suggestions of the California State Auditor. I can tell you, there's no requirement in state law that these services be bid, but they're, in terms of the community benefit services, based on a bid. When the city entered into its contract with its current street sweeper, that was put out. This segues that to responsibility and moves street sweeping from once a week to twice a week. In terms of our outward-facing services, we've got quite a need in that area. Likewise, with the median maintenance, we've had a number of concerns about poor quality service. We just rebid it. So the price in this contract reflects that bid process and price. And then finally, with graffiti removal services, we're now spending about half that for one man and a truck full-time, and this just takes that amount and doubles it. So the comparative measure there is what's the cost of doing it with city force accounts? I believe these prices are competitive, and I believe they're reasonable.
So from Athens' perspective, you know, to provide these, you know, three items at over $2 million, I mean, what does Athens get from this, right? This is, right, it's not like you're in the business of just handing stuff out.
No, we don't, no, we're not. We're in the business of making money, just like you are. But it's a long-term game for us. One of our owners uses the phrase, he'd rather make a slow nickel than a quick dime. And we're a unique company, sir. When you look at what we do, we do this stuff in-house. In the cities that all surround you, in all of the cities, we do the street sweeping, we do graffiti removal, we do all those things. And the long-term benefit is really to the community. We like to be a community partner. In this particular community, we've been here a long time. It makes sense to take advantage of that tenure and allow us to do that over a long period of time. So what we get out of it over a long period of time is a benefit of profit over a long, not immediately, not in the first year, not in the 10th year, but, you know, after a few years, we start becoming profitable in that regard. But in the interim, your city becomes beautiful. Athens is a partner in that. But make no lie, it's very expensive for us for the first seven or eight years. We go the other way. But what's important, I think, to resonate is that, from an environmental standpoint and from a philanthropic and stewardship standpoint, the city's holding us accountable to help them. So we're more of a partner in a broader sense. And believe it or not, a few of those things are connected. Anything that goes into the gutter, that goes into the drains, it's all trash, they're all connected in a way. So it does make some sense, and it's things that we do in other cities. So basically, your city staff took that and asked me to present to my board this overall package that wasn't easy for me to do either, because it does go the other way. But one of our owners, when he first started working for his family after he got out of school, this was his account. This is where he worked and ran the business, and he really has a lot of love for this city, and he still does. And he was the main decision-maker. When I was presenting this along with Matt to our board, it was his guiding position to give back to this city and to make us go the wrong way for a few years until this starts getting right. So the benefit that we get is just the pride of helping this city be the shining gem that it was once before on the mend.
I guess, can someone explain how this is a tax? Because from what I understand, it's going to be a rate increase pretty much for the remainder of the contract. From what I recall, the previous process was in order to do a rate increase, you had to come to the council to get approval. So this is basically an infinite rate increase to get these services.
You still have to--
Can someone explain that to me, just so I can understand? Go for it.
We still have to come to the council for annual approvals. There's a process that this goes through, and it's really no different than the other annual increases that you have. Sir, under this unfunded mandate, you have to do this anyways, and every city has had to do it. So we're trying to make this more palatable for you in doing that, instead of doing it all year one. We're trying to move it out over many years. And so it's part, you know, cities are struggling right now, and it, you know, it's not, you can call it a tax, but if you don't do it, you're going to be fined $10,000 a day by Cal Recycle. So our Assembly and Senate said, we're going to have this new law, this is what we're going to do, and you have to do this. So in that entire package--
I mean, no, I understand the SB 1383 portion.
Correct.
But the graffiti abatement, the street sweeping, the medians, that's not 1383. These are additionals, right?
Those are things that our company is going to start doing for this city as part of a beautification program in exchange for the many years that we have here.
Right.
And it's going to cost us money to do that.
Yes, and it's eventually, in the long term, also going to cost the residents money. Yes.
Potentially. I mean, at some point in time, they're going to be paying more, but 90% of that is for 1383. A very small portion is for the services. Very small portion.
And I understand that. I just, again, when I go back to the audit findings and I go back to best practices of cities, right, we do have an RFP process, right? We do put out to bid. And so, again, to farm out these services, all these services to Athens, and then, right, we're creating a situation where that evergreen clause becomes even more powerful, right, and more difficult for future councils to look at subjectively and make a decision whether or not they want to terminate. And so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. I understand the 1383 section. I also wanted residents to understand what the five-year cooling off meant, which does mean we can't terminate the evergreen until 2028, means the contract goes at least until 2053. And then I did want residents to understand that the service, these three other services aren't coming free, that they are paying for these services, but they're not paying, normally, we'd have a different revenue, usually we call that a tax. This is just going to come through their trash bill. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Okay, I want to follow up, okay, and a council member, Tabai Tabai. I think a couple of questions I have. Okay, the first question I have is CPI. Okay, you talk about the CPI, Consumer Price Index, okay? I know you have a trash. So I want to clarify with the resident, they understand this CPI is different than the Consumer Price Index. This is a trash index. So how we get this? Because I don't know trash index. I know the CPI, I know the Consumer Price Index, because I'm in the mortgage business. So, but how about, how can we know the graphic about this CPI? Because, okay, I think your offer is the 3% plus CPI and 2.5% plus CPI, and then later on, we're CPI plus one forever, okay? And the consumer, okay, for the residential, for the commercial, would be the 7% plus CPI, okay? And then 5% plus CPI, 5% plus CPI, and CPI plus 111, okay, forever. So, but the CPI will be the very important index due based on your offer, okay? And so what is the CPI in that we can, okay, refer on?
It's the same--
Where we can get this information?
It's the same national CPI that when you're doing your index for CPI, you just put garbage and waste or garbage and sewer CPI. Same national CPI program, and on your sheet, there should be a 10-year--
I understand, but my point is where we can get this CPI, okay, public record, okay?
It's published just like the one that you're familiar with. It's on the same form.
So basically--
Right below it.
When we Google it, okay, trash--
Yes.
CPI, it will pop out?
It pops out, and--
And we can do a comparison?
It's not an Athens thing. It's a national average on how the rest of the nation does it. Your finance person can walk you through that, but you'll know what that is every year. You'll tell us. We won't, we don't come in here and just say what it is. It's a nationally published number.
So past the CPI, what is the graphic look like? Is it 3% or 6%, 2%, 0.5%? Okay, and what, so maybe we can have some kind of idea about the CPI? Because if we, based on CPI, this CPI become very important index.
It's in the staff report. You'll see they end up in basically the same place. They follow the same, like, I think the, my recollection of the staff report was that a regular CPI was like 2.4 or 5, and the trash CPI was 2.8. That was the difference over a 10-year period, a very small difference.
So what is the past 10 years' average would be, how many percent, 3%?
The past 10-year average was about 2.3 on, for the CPI for the LA region, and then the US trash average was about 2.83.
2.83%? So what, okay, this annually, right? Annually, based on annual--
Yes.
Okay, CPI, trash CPI index?
Yes.
Okay, and we will, so basically, every year, okay, on your proposal, it will be 3 plus CPI and 2.5 plus CPI for residential and CPI plus one?
Only for the first two years. After that, it's just the CPI plus one forever. Those other ones go away.
I know, but currently, we are CPI only, right?
Yes.
So now you're asking for CPI plus one for how long?
For the contract.
How long the contract?
25 years.
25 years.
Trigger. It's a 25-year rolling contract.
And are we still in the 25-years contract currently? So right now, you're asking for additional five years? So you're talking about 30-years contract?
No. It's still a 25-year contract. It's just that you don't, wouldn't consider doing the trigger for another five-year period like you did before to stay that.
So you have a five-years--
Yes.
--ago time?
Yes.
To say, I want to cancel this 25 years?
Yes.
So you have to wait for five years--
Yes.
--to talk about, and then it's 30 years?
That's what you wanted to do, but if that's on your mind--
5 plus 25 is 30.
No.
Yeah, so just, no? 25 plus 5 is what, 31?
It doesn't change the term of the contract at all. It just changes the term of when you could implement the wind down of the contract.
So do we have a comparison? I know this is 1383, but at least we can bring to resident, okay, understand that, okay, with Cal Recycle, want us to do this, we stay requirement, okay? Because I joined the COG, okay, it's council government, they have a group, city, they do it themselves. So have we do a comparison, well, what is comparison based on the trash company to help us to do this? And/or we are joining the COG to do it ourselves? Do we have comparison for that? At least we can show to resident regarding, okay, which one will be much more, okay? And we have a number to prove it, we have to make a judgment. Yeah, go ahead. You want to say something?
Yes, sir. What the COG is offering you is not what we're doing. The COG is, has a special program that they want you to join to help in the upfront--
Inspection, et cetera, yeah.
We do that. We're not charging you for that service. So we're not even charging you for that. We have a zero on that line. We're doing all the backend work. We're going to meet with the customers, with our recycling coordinators, which there's 10 of in this community that we have to hire. They're going to go out, they've already been doing their work here. They're going to go out and identify the tier one and tier two customers. They will give those customers the proper place to take that. The organizations, there's like three local organizations of where the non-prepared food can go that's left over. The COG has a program that expands those three to more, and that's up to you if you want to do that, but that's not one of the services that we're offering. We're helping the customer help themselves.
Kerry, you are excellent speaker. You are a very good speaker. You are a good salesperson, okay? But I hope you understand, okay, we have to stand on the taxpayers, okay, and to kind of work with you. I know this is your offer, but is this offer can be continued to work with, to find out? Because CPI plus one, I really worry, okay, because plus one, that will increase, continue to increase the, our resident of their trash bill, okay, basically annually continue to increase.
I would like to respond to that for you, if I may, sir. I may be a salesperson. I don't think I am. What I really am is a lifelong resident here that was a mayor and city council member, and I do understand what you're going through. This is not my offer. My offer was much more money. I want you to know that. My offer was a longer-term contract, much more money. This has been, we have been negotiating this for six months. I went to my board and said, please listen to what the city of West Covina wants us to do, and that was not easy. We have met with residents, had town hall meetings. I believe your city manager and your staff and your city attorney have taken 90% of the work out of it for you and then given me the charge to go out and educate your residents. I would tell you that I believe this is a big city, and you have a lot of smart residents, and they know the value of Athens. And they're not, they're not here complaining about it. There's a small Facebook group, some small things happening, but the majority of your residents and businesses understand this law. And what I want to tell you is I'm as far from a salesperson that you can think of, And what I want to tell you is I'm as far from a salesperson that you can think of, because I'm here for the long term. I remember when I was mayor, I was down here talking to another mayor from Glendora, reaching out. I care about this community. My wife was born and raised right here. I've been here, I've been in this community for over 40 years, and I care about the community. But I do want you to know, sir, this was not my offer. My offer looked nothing like this.
Gary, I got it. Thank you so much. Okay, I still want to ask more question.
No, okay, I'm sorry. I was answering.
Yeah, you give a very passionate about your love of West Covina, okay? And, okay, we all love West Covina. Thank you. I hope you can get cheaper, okay? If you love us more, okay, give us a cheaper price.
More love.
We need more love, okay? So, but here, we go back to the contract. So basically, okay, I know every time, for many times, we, every three years, we go through the contract again. In 2016, we're talking about that contract, and we have a sweeping, okay? And then we are going to do another contract, and that's in 2018, okay? So what with this, with this offer, okay, and when we can review the contract again? Sound like this contract is like forever, okay? So how can we make a decision for our future council? Because we're not going to be here forever. What we're here just for this time being. So how can we decide something, just like Evergreen, that previous city council approved, now we stuck, okay? And so what is this contract that will be, okay? Is that we have our future council, or we, or no matter, somebody over here can have a chance to review your contract?
Sir, they'll have the same chance that you have, and as a future city council member can look at it and change it if they want to. I do want to let you know that the waste business is not a short-term business.
Gary, okay, I'm sorry, okay, you say they can change any time. It's a contract. It's a contract. It's a contract. If a contract is say CPI plus one, so how can they coming back and say, okay, we want to change the contract? It's a contract.
The city council may determine they want to do something different. They have that right to open up contracts whenever they want.
If you want to terminate your contract, you sue us. So you still have a contract. You have a contract in force, so I'm saying what, okay, the future council have a right to need to discuss your contract if we make a decision for them in the future.
They do have that right, sir. I was on city council for.
So maybe city manager, city attorney, Gary, thank you. So maybe you can answer this question?
Better than I can.
What, it's a city attorney?
You have, the council has, can call it up. But again, I think Athens would have to agree to any amendments to it. There's a provision in there allows you to amend.
They say, sorry, we're not going to, but if you want to change, we're going to sue you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, right? It's a contract. It's a contract. We are all contract people, so it's a contract. So we want to know this contract, do we have a duration to, what year to? Any contract has a duration, when is the starting day, when is end day? So this contract sound like we don't have an end date. Okay, right? So we want to know, do we have end date every time, how many year we can review this contract? So is this have any way we can have that kind of a contract? Gary, go ahead.
Anytime with this current amendment to your contract, anytime after 2028, you have the ability to do that, to make the contract have an end, if that's what your goal is to do. So anytime after 2028, the city council can make a determination to say, hey, we want the contract to begin having an end date, and they can do that, and that's your right in the contract anytime.
So you say 2028, today is 2022, so six years later?
Yes.
So it's six year, okay, this contract is duration to six year. But my understanding this year, the contract is continue kicking for 25 years.
Yes.
If we don't terminate Evergreen, then they will continue. We want to clarify, it's, okay, about, is this is what about? Is Evergreen CPI plus one, okay? Unless we have a new law from the state, then you want to increase again, okay? But the point would be CPI plus one after this bump due to the Cal Recycler want us to do organic thing. But we don't know the future crazy, they want to do something different, we want to change, then they will come back to raise the price again. So we just want to know to prepare, okay? But if we have nothing happen, do we have, so this will be CPI plus one? But five years later, we can revisit? Am I right? Is that, Dave?
Through the chair, I would describe this initial extension of the cooling off period as a golden handcuff. The firm is required to help us comply with SB 1383. If it weren't for that lovely state law, we wouldn't be here tonight. But in order to get into compliance, they need to make some major capital and operational investments. This is not a negotiated process based on selfishness, but rather on service. And so a future council would have the right to trigger.
Because I don't understand what you're talking about, the golden handcuff? Okay, I just want to know, okay, is there five years duration? And after five years, we can negotiate, or future council can negotiate, okay, or revisit, review this?
After the cooling off period runs.
Why is the cooling off period? Why is called the cooling off?
Now, two years left on it, and then this would add five years to that. So at the end of that additional five-year period, the council could trigger a conclusion of the.
So meaning currently, we have some kind of five years?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I don't even know we have that, okay?
You're in the third year of a five-year cooling off period right now.
So if you want to terminate, we have to wait for two years to terminate Evergreen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and now he want to extend for another four years, it will become six years? Of, you want to take the termination of Evergreen, then we have to wait for in 2028 to terminate?
Yes.
Okay, and then in the meantime, 28 plus 25?
Through the chair, I understand the question.
I don't think I will exist that time, okay, but.
Let me say this. We're here tonight, in terms of this process, because we've been through a series of town hall meetings. We've heard from the residents. We've heard from the holler. We vetted product, we put it together. Now we came to you. This is your first look at it. And I acknowledge that we might need some more time on it. Our mayor was unable to be here tonight as much as he wanted to be. I'm pretty sure he's watching at home. I'm sure he has opinion. So if you want to put this over for a couple of weeks, this is a long-term contract. That might be a wise move on your part. And I'm comfortable with this contract. I recommend it to you. But I understand if you want to give it a little more vetting and a little more time, that could be a good move tonight.
On your offer, what happened to the bus stop? Who's going to clean the bus stop?
Well, if I could answer that, I think it's easy.
The bus stop too, right?
Yeah, in this process, to get trash hauling fever, because other cities get more cookies. Some cities are getting the bus shelters cleaned. Some cities are getting the spilled ice cream cones steam cleaned off the sidewalk. There's other ornaments you could put on the Christmas tree. I got into that a little bit, and then I got out of it thinking, I want to be the adult in the room. I don't want to get greedy.
Final question, okay, Dave, okay, final question. I want to give my time to all the council member can ask. Okay, I want to understand how guarantee, I know Athens has a good reputation to do our trash, but what is guaranteed they can remove the graffiti right away? They can clean the street, clean sparklers, that we can, I don't want to, we can sleep on the street. Okay, we can see a clean street. Okay, we can see our median. How, what was the guarantee that Athens will, okay, with that performance? And if the performance is not there, what is the consequence? Do we have any teeth to make sure nothing will comply?
Through the chair, if I may, I assume the city attorney will tell us that we could sue them for specific performance and failure to perform.
We don't want to sue people, okay?
We do not. I believe they're a good service provider, and they will provide.
Maybe Gary can answer, okay, what kind of guarantee you can give to us regarding if you can provide those services? And the service, the performance will be satisfactory?
We perform those services in other cities, and that has been vetted out through your staff.
Which city, which city is that?
We street sweep 27 cities, and we do graffiti removal in six of them.
Can you give me an example, one city?
But pardon?
Do you give me a couple of city names so I can try by?
Glendora, Covina.
I know Glendora, okay.
Azusa, all of the, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach.
That's a bit too far for me, okay?
Temple City, San Marino, South Pasadena, Anrovia. I mean, there's so many of them. We're the largest in the region of all of those services. But we do it as a package with our people that want to have relationships with us. If you're not interested in that, having that relationship, you don't have to have it.
So the graffiti remover, how fast you can remove? Somebody call? Do you have a hotline?
Yes, we do, sir.
How fast you can?
The good news for you is that our yard borders your city, and we, and all of our street sweepers park in that yard, and they all drive through the city on the way home. Anyways, I have a standing.
So is that 24 hours remove the graffiti?
Yeah. Yes.
As it comes up, could we introduce Matt Nicholas to the council?
I want to say, good evening, councilman. I will guarantee you that my team will respond, and you will have better service than what you're currently getting now.
So, but give me the timeline, please?
In 24 hours.
Within 24 hours, any graffiti will be removed, and patch is the same colors of the wall?
Yeah.
It's the standard. It's not going to be, it's not going to be different color like, not matching.
We color match as close as Sherlin Williams can match the color.
Yeah, exactly. And your name, please?
My name is Matt Nicholas.
Matt, okay, thank you, Matt.
Go ahead, Councilman Tabai.
Yeah, I just had one question. I know from the previous contract, if we terminated the Evergreen in 2023, then we would lose that $300,000. So let's say in 2028, the council decided to terminate the Evergreen and start the 25-year clock. How would that impact the graffiti, street sweeping, median?
We still do it. You just pay for the service at whatever the rate is or whatever you want to do with it. But we still would do that service for you.
Oh, okay, so, but we'd pay separate than what they were, we were already paying? So, right, currently with the deal, it's included?
Yes.
So, but if we terminated the, in 2028, we would then have to separately pay for that?
You would just pay for it. You would pay for the same service instead of getting it at no charge. Yes.
Oh, okay, right, okay. So then, so then the next, again, I think, as Councilman Wu had also mentioned, so for that next council, I guess this might be the golden handcuff. If you terminate that Evergreen, then you lose the $300,000 and you lose all these services.
Through the chair, I think it would prevent you from doing that. It would be, you'd be disincentivized to do that.
Right.
Highly incentivized to repair any broken aspect of the relationship.
Right. I mean, in essence, you know, this is a forever, a forever contract. I mean, it would be really difficult for any council to take that step. I mean, it's been difficult with $300,000 on the line. You know, I could imagine 2.2, 2.5 million plus whatever, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, one of the issues that I have is also with the, with the contract that's forever, Evergreen. And with the auditor making that comment that, you know, we're not, it's not in the best interest of the city with all these restrictions. It doesn't allow us the ability to negotiate in any favorable way. And I have a problem with that, and I didn't know it was so bad in terms of having to wait another five years before we can actually terminate this. But I just, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion?
Are you, we, I know you mentioned to push forth. I mean, you can motion it, but are we also going to take consideration Mayor Castellanos with this? Did he have?
I think we should maybe continue.
I mean, I wanted to see, obviously, well, first of all, how many cities total do you service? Is it 27 total or?
We service about 55 cities. 27 we do exclusively, where we do all of the services. And the other ones, we may do one or two different services.
And with the posting of all the cities, I know you said some cities are, you don't service some and you service others?
Those are just the ones around your area.
Okay. And I know we wanted to see the, I mean, well, city manager, did you happen to see all the other all-inclusive service contracts with the 25 cities?
I, through the chair, I, Stephanie, could you put back up the comparative rate chart for the other cities that we had as part of this PowerPoint? These weren't all Athens cities. We were just trying to show a snapshot of what some other cities in this area pay for monthly rates. Because we want to stay price competitive and wanted to know where we are today. This chart is going to be different next week or next month or six months from now, certainly. I would be happy to take your direction if you want me to reach out to other of Athens' client cities to gauge satisfaction, et cetera. I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do any work that you wish me to do. You could express it to me subsequently.
Have a question.
That'd be fine.
Okay, okay, what is deadline? I think they extended to July 1st for Cal Recycle, right? July 1st, yes or no?
It's been extended. I think we've got now until July 1.
Yeah, okay, so we need.
I'd like to think we'd be ahead of the game. Yeah.
We need to comply by before July 1st to get this compliance with the state requirement. So meaning today is February 15, so we see what we can do. But we need to get a little bit more information.
I agree.
And let's see what we can do, okay? And to, well-spoken Gary. Love the city so much, and hopefully you can love us more, okay? So can the negotiate a little bit, okay, to the resident? And then to be, I understand you need to spend money on a lot of thing, organic thing. And we appreciate your help, okay, and try to provide the best service to the city you love, okay? And the city we love too, okay? I hope you understand. Here is no hard feeling. We have to, okay, and try to get the information. Okay, that's why we sit over here. So I hope we can continue it, so, okay, to get more information. Hopefully, you guys can continue to talk, okay? And we try to find a way, okay, and we can kind of come up to agreement, okay? And later on, for us to agree and see what would be fair, not current, not only the current, but to the future too. Okay, for the future city council, future generation to work on, okay, this contract. And so in that way, my motion will be continued for next meeting.
I just wanted to say, I know our residents just want to see what value they're getting. And I know when they see an increase and they don't know why, they get frustrated, and, you know, yearly, and we want to be able to explain all that. I do have to say that Athens, residents doesn't have a complaint with Athens, like I've mentioned. And you've delivered exceptional customer service. And, you know, with the bulky items, they look forward that to a yearly thing, including the pickup and how things, our services are being done. I do have to say that, I know I toured one of your facility. It was actually very impeccable. It was very clean, and, you know, surprising, it's a trash place, but it didn't have that trash garbage smell. So I know that you take care of Athens, well, the company there and the facility is very clean. But I just, with this, we just want to just know what we're really getting. I know a big concern, of course, is the Evergreen clause. And I just want to make sure that with our future state auditing, they don't hit us with that. And so that one, we just want to make sure that we also please the state auditors. But that's pretty much it on this. But, you know, with the organization, how it's ran, we don't question that. We love Athens. It's just we want to make sure their residents are getting the value of what they, what is being delivered that they want to know. But thank you.
I appreciate that. I think that your city manager and your city attorney will be able to help you through the auditor issue. They, they worked on it very much during this period of time, and I think you're good with that. It's your decision.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we got a second?
I second.
Roll call.
I have a motion from Councilman Wu to continue this item to the next meeting with a second by Councilmember Tabai. Councilmember Tabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Motion passes for zero.
Are there any, let's see, mayor council member reports? City council, you have a request?
Okay, the, okay, this council comment or request?
Yeah.
Okay, I think I want to, the follow-up, okay? Weeks ago, last city council regarding the bathroom connection. So I want to know the status, okay? Why is the status currently, and have that been connected? And if it's not, what is dragging, okay, and still not happen?
Through the chair, I'm going to ask our assistant city manager, Roxanne Laramie. Through the chair, I'm going to ask our assistant city manager Roxanne Larama to respond. She's been working on that, that problem.
Roxanne, you can, you can sit over there if you want.
Mayor Protem Diaz, through the chair, if I may, to address Councilman Wu's question regarding the status of the repair work of the Shadow Oak bathroom. Per council's directions, one of the options that we did have was to take a look at giving our staff the opportunity to do it internally, excuse me. With that being said, there were a couple of training certifications that needed to be acquired first.
And, okay, when this thing happened, I basically received a complaint from the local resident of Southside and the resident sent me the email regarding, in January, we say, okay, it's not working, okay? I have no idea what is not working. So the first thing is, why the city council didn't get notified that, that, okay, that thing is not working properly and we have a brand new bathroom? So the first thing is, like last time, I asked what's going on, okay? Or who's responsible for that? Accountability has to be there, okay? That's the first thing. So, so I, I even request, I called, okay, ABS, our, okay, installer, okay? And they, they give me the timeline, I say it's your responsibility or city responsibility to, we pay the money to get this new bathroom. And based on the timeline, okay, and the, in, in, okay, and September 14th, okay, they already mentioned the city, our public work told them that we have one connected sewer, but on the November 29th, okay, they have been 100% signed by our inspector, okay? And then right away in December, possible early December, already crowded, okay? That is blocked, so meaning, meaning what is, that is not working? So, so, but from December, January, right now, February 15th, so if the city's, okay, public work staff already found out the issue, why didn't you address right away, okay, to connect? I connect, okay, my, okay, sewer and I did, okay, hired the contractor, okay, and to put a sewer connection, so, so why so difficult to do it? And then last two weeks ago, we talked to Raul, they say they're going to take care or maybe do it in-house so quickly can fix the issue because this is not a difficult thing to do, which is taking open, we dig a look and then connected, then right away resident can utilize the brand new bathroom. So, so, so the issue over here that I heard about, so they want to do the in-house and somebody complaining about, okay, and, okay, they, they not qualified to do it, okay? That's why I'm wondering if our public work staff that we hired and fixing the street is not qualified to do a basic thing, so why is the use of public work staff? And if everything will be contracted out and with very expensive contract, okay? No matter what, we got the issue is, suppose we have a proud public work, okay, and a professional, that is maintenance helping to fix our street, so what happened? Why suddenly some people stopping for our city staff to fix the problem? So our resident, the taxpayer can utilize that bathroom by the way? Can you answer that question?
Through the chair, if I may, I will do my best to answer that question for you. What you're looking at is years of deferred maintenance of issues that have been longstanding and that have not been addressed, unfortunately. I think what I'm hearing, what you're saying, we're trying to balance, trying to find that balance between what is responsible to our taxpayers in the sense of the monies that we receive from them versus the responsibility of our departments versus the responsibility that we have to the staff to protect them versus the responsibility of being able to address things in a quick fashion. Challenges is that, and this is not an excuse, but this is just, just a fact, you have a new set of eyes coming into that division, to that department that's taking a look. We're maneuvering and discovering opportunities to address these challenges to, again, balance or achieve that balance to what I just described. I hear what you're saying, you know, we do have public staff members, or excuse me, public services staff members, maintenance staff members who are, who would want to get their hands in, who, who want to be able to produce and to, to demonstrate to the community, to our residents, the pride that they have in their workmanship. And we want to provide them with that opportunity, but at the same time, we have to do that in a fashion that's safe.
Impossible, somebody file complaint, so stop this thing, so why did they fix the issue? And then they starting want to drag the issue. So I think this is the problem we have, okay? We have internal issue, okay? People not fixing the problem, people create a problem, didn't fix the problem and now checking the problem. Because this has happened, okay, and in end of November, okay? And then we found the problem early December and how can it be fixed? Can you have your home without a toilet for three months? I don't think so, and you just connect, okay, on the street. I think that people have to stick, treat this a stay on home, right? And, okay, and treated this just another day. So accountability, I, we really want city manager, okay, you have to be responsible for this. So meaning you have to find who is responsible for this, okay? And just like last time, the Shadow Oaks Community Service Center, we not, we not even notify the council, they shut it down. Who approved the shut it down? Why didn't notify the council last year, why didn't notify the city manager? So I think we have, okay, the screw is kind of loose, okay? And in any company, okay, this is a major, okay, issue. So we really want accountability, okay, and it's showing to our public work. If we everything contract out, then why we need a public work staff? Why we hire 10 additional proud, okay, and the maintenance people, okay? And if everything have the contract out, and then it will cost city, possible we don't need a staff. And that is what our intention of the council. So why, okay, we, somebody want to insist contract out with $98,000? I hire my, okay, person to, okay, connect, it's only like $3,000, $4,000. Let's say give us three times for time, that's still less than $15,000. How can there be $98,000 on this contract? So would you please find out what's the reason the contract would be so expensive and dragging so long? You go ahead.
Through the chair, if I may, to answer your question, we can ask for the cost breakdowns, you know, take a, take a look at, because there were various bids, you know? We can take a, a look at those. At the end of the day, I think we need to, we want to provide our residents with the best value, whatever the best value is and the most responsible fact.
We need to fix this connection, okay? And the council or resident just want a working bathroom, they've been requested for 30 years. Finally, we install the bathroom, but the connection is not there. Then make a connection so people can utilize, it's so simple. So I don't know why, okay, it's, who is dragging? So, so please have our staff to get it done, no matter you want to do the, but I want to make sure the contract, the money, okay, is, is proper, okay? Second thing, if somebody say, we need to certify, I, I think it's Bogers because they dig the street all the time, okay? And then why we have to do something redundant, it's unnecessary, okay? And just because somebody not happy, want to file a complaint, and then it become an issue. Go ahead.
I think Councilman Wu, I think you've hit on something very important and very timely. I think with pride of workmanship, I think also comes responsibility and accountability. So I do hear what you're saying.
I met all the, most of all the public work, they, they're very proud of their job and they told me they can do it. I, I don't know why suddenly somebody stopped them to doing the very easy task. So, 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 so this is something we want the investigation, we want to make sure, okay, okay, resident get a proper, okay, investment for their staff, pay the salary and then we should have a working bathroom. It's a ridiculous joke, okay? You have a brand new bathroom and you have no connection, how can that happen? Okay, that is really ridiculous, so, okay, I don't want to drag more time, but this thing should be done, okay? And there's, and there's power, who is doing the power, okay? Why did somebody complain the power all the places? So we want to make sure, okay, all this basic, that we hire those people, we do the job, fix the street, okay? And who's responsible for that, accountability? Let, let's get this accountability back to our, okay, proud public work department. Otherwise, why is the point? We, we hire 10 people and they don't, end up, nothing they can do because everything have the contract. This, this just doesn't make any sense, okay? And I think with the new leadership, okay, do the reform, shake up that public work, otherwise we just dismantle, okay? If everything will contract, then what's the point to have a staff, okay? And we have all the equipment. Every time open house, we see all the beautiful equipment, that somebody have to operate. It's not just showing to resident we have equipment, but doesn't really work on the street and make sure the maintenance fix our thing. So anyway, how soon we can get this connection fixed, please? Do you give me estimation date? No matter what, you want the contract or you want to use in-house? And then I want to have a report of accountability, who screwed this thing up? What is the consequence? So accountability show our city staff. It cannot be no consequence to this major hiccup. I don't know if purposely or this is intentionally or this is just incompetent. You give me a time?
Through the chair, if I may, allow us to regroup with the staff so that we can address with the leadership staff so that we can address, that is, that is what I can tell you at this moment.
Okay, hopefully we can get a bathroom people can use for a week, two weeks?
Let us address it and we'll, we will respond back to you. We, we, we do need to regroup with the staff.
So let's do it ASAP.
Understood.
Otherwise we move, let's do the bathroom, okay? It's, if you're not working, okay, thank you. Okay, you okay, okay? Okay, on the light, a little bit lighter note, won't be so brutal, okay? Not, okay, I will understand it's a frustration to have a brand new bathroom. We, we went and then now it's not working for such a long time. It is, it's really, really a disappointment, a major disappointment. We see the union, they're very happy, they come over here and we very happy for them, but they need to perform, okay? They need to show us what they can do, okay? And I, I saw them at the Baranka, okay, others, okay, and the restaurant, restaurant row, they're working very hard to make it very pretty, okay? And they're moving all the direction, so I can see the pride. Why this one like this? It doesn't make sense. Clean up the street, okay, make ours, okay, and city beautiful, okay? Make a functional bathroom, make our bathroom in all the park look nice and, and especially Old 16 Park, the park has to be presentable and safe and clean, okay? I hope the new leadership can shake up, okay, our public work, okay? Who doesn't want to walk into place they, they feel proud, okay? So the, the, this would be 2023, that is centennial of West Covina, 1923, we set up our city. So I think we should celebrate 100 years. I think city, okay, need to have a banner or some kind of promotion to let people know West Covina is a longevity exists for 100 years and doing pretty good. And we want to show them the beautiful face of West Covina. That's why we need to clean up the street and make sure, make sure our street look nice and park look nice. It's a proud city. So, so I want to make sure, Roxanne, since you in charge of communication and with the city manager, I don't want to sweep everything to her, you need to take the leadership, okay? And to make sure our 100 years, okay, centennial celebration that next year, okay, let, well, let people know West Covina 100 years old birthday, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Wu. Councilman Tabatavai.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I had a few, few announcements. First, again, the homeless count, as City Manager Carmody mentioned, February 22nd, 8 to midnight at Cameron Park. Again, we're still looking for volunteers, we're about halfway there, so if we can get more people to volunteer. The other announcement, Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio's office is participating in the February food drive, so they're, they're looking for, for canned goods. In West Covina, the site that they've targeted for, for drop off of cans is at the Plaza West Covina at the Greater West Covina Business Association next to JCPenney. So if you want to give those canned foods, please drop them off there. And lastly, I did want to acknowledge the, the passing of South Hills' great Major League Baseball player, Jeremy Giambi. Again, he, he meant a lot to the community, he did a lot of work with kids, I know quite a few young baseball players. And so I just wanted to, to make sure to acknowledge his passing and, and what a loss it is for the, not only, you know, the baseball community, but, but our community here in West Covina. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
You want to make this a motion to, as a memory, you want to do it?
Yeah, so if, if we can adjourn the meeting in the name of Jeremy Giambi.
We'll adjourn the meeting under the name of Jeremy Giambi. Good, okay? Good night. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.